Well, then I won't jump in not knowing what you're talking about.
We were, we were talking about Junie being better off not talking to any of us.
No comment.
I'm with you, Ms. Mayor, no comment.
All right, so I see, I think we have all the council members here, is that correct?
I'm not seeing Rachel.
I see her on the participant list, there she is. Super, so. Let's see, Alicia, I think we are ready whenever you are ready.
All right, sir, I am ready.
Emily, would you please confirm Channel Eight?
There, yes, Channel Eight is good to go.
All right, wonderful, I'll begin recording.
All right, I see the recording, so welcome everyone to the September 28th, 2021 special meeting of the Boulder City Council. We have one announcement tonight. That announcement is the usual announcement that COVID-19 vaccination information can be found at www.bouldercounty.org/families/disease/COVID-19/vaccines. And with that announcement, we are done with announcements, so Alicia, when you are ready, could you please call the roll?
Of course, sir, and good evening, everyone. Councilmember Branca.
Present.
Friend.
Here.
Joseph.
Present.
Nagel.
Here.
Swetlin.
Present.
Wallack.
Present.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Enya.
Present.
Mayor, we have our call.
Excellent, thank you, Alicia, and can you take us to the next item?
Yes, sir, of course, our next item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, and that includes items A through F.
Very good, thank you, Alicia, and on our consent agenda tonight, we only have one item that we intend to pause and focus on a bit, and so with that, I would return, turn to Bob and Rachel as our city attorney recruitment committee to see if you want to speak to us about finalists.
I think we do, I'll start, Bob, if that's okay. So Bob and I, as the city attorney subcommittee, recruitment subcommittee, are recommending three finalists for the city attorney position tonight. And we think that all council members received a confidential memo with the names of the three finalists, as well as packets where you would have seen the candidate's application materials and wherein they would have been referred to as candidates C, D, and E. And before we publicly disclose the names of the candidates that we are going to recommend, and before we all vote on promoting them as finalists, we wanted to invite colleagues to let us know if any concerns exist. And for the sakes of the candidates, we don't want to announce any of their names if they're not going to be selected as finalists. So we are going to invite colleagues now to express any concerns about candidates C, D, and E.
Thank you, Rachel, so I'll turn now to council, council, any input or feedback for the committee? I am seeing none, so back to you, Rachel, I think silence in this case means dissent.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Bob then, thanks.
Well, thanks, colleagues, and so as you saw in the memo, the candidates C, D, and E, I'll say their names now, and there'll be more information about each of these, if council approves these finalists, there'll be more information about each of these candidates shared with the public and with the community tomorrow from the communications departments. For the candidates that we are recommending, that Rachel and I are recommending as finalists are Sandra Yanis, Adam Stevens, and Teresa Tate. And with that, I'll go ahead and Sam, if it's okay, I'll move the consent agenda items A through F with those three names inserted for item F as our recommended finalist for city attorney.
Thank you, Bob, is there a second for the consent agenda motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I would invite any discussion before we move to a roll call, but any questions, comments, or feedback on the consent agenda? Great, I see none, so Alicia, could you please walk us through a roll call vote?
Yes, sir, thank you, councilmember Yates.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Rocket.
Hi.
Friend.
Yes.
Joseph.
Yes.
Nagel. Swetlin.
Hi.
Wallack.
Hi.
And Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor, the consent agenda items A through F with the names inserted has been approved unanimously.
Very good, thank you very much, and congratulations to all of our finalists, especially to you, Sandra, thank you for applying, and to all three for applying, and we look forward to getting to know you better in our interview process, and hope the public takes advantage of getting to know each of the finalists who have applied. And with that, I guess back to you, Alicia, to the next item.
All right, sir, my next item on tonight's agenda is item number three, our call-up check-in. Item 3A is the call-up consideration for the concept plan review and comment for the redevelopment of a 2.33 acre parcel that includes the addresses noted below, located primarily at 2504 Spruce Street with 63 residential units and an extensive exercise and an exercise room for residents. The proposal is for a two-phase project. Phase one is planned with 16 townhomes and two apartments. Phase two would include up to 45 apartments of varying sizes and bedroom counts. This is reviewed under case number LUR2021-00016.
Thank you, Alicia, and I guess to you, Maria.
We have Charles Pharaoh unless Jacob Lindsay wants to make a brief introduction, but if not, I'll ask Cheryl to come present.
Great, thanks so much, Emily, if you want to bring up the presentation, that would be great. Great. Okay, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Charles Pharaoh with Planning and Development Services. Elaine McLaughlin, our case manager for this application, couldn't be with us this evening, so I'll be presenting on her behalf, I've tried my best to get up to speed on the details of the proposal quickly, but tonight I'll be presenting some very brief information related to land use and zoning, the proposal itself, and then some general notes on the key issues that were raised by both staff and the planning board during their discussion of the application. But before I move on, just a quick reminder that concept plan is an exploratory process that's designed to solicit feedback from the community, staff, planning board, and the city council, and was really meant to identify key issues early in the process that may inform a future site review submission, also no formal action results from the concept plan review, only feedback and input to the applicant at this point in the process, so. I might also note that we have Ali Gittfar from the applicant team here on the call this evening, in the event that there are questions for him, as well as other myriad staff from Housing, City Attorney's Office, and Historic Preservation, so, next slide, please. So for planning context, I think it's always instructive to start at the broad level from the comprehensive plan, or in this case, the site is part of the Boulder Valley Regional Center, which is considered one of the city's three main regional activity centers. Regional activity centers are defined in the comp plan as places where the potential for the highest intensity redevelopment with a wide range of uses exists. Next slide, please. So the Boulder Valley Regional Center is further defined as an area with a pedestrian focus at a human scale with a goal of making the area memorable for people-oriented spaces. You can see the site is really just located up in the northwest corner there of the Boulder Valley Regional Center. Next slide. So there's actually three different Boulder Valley comp plan land use map designations on the site, which is a bit unique. The comprehensive plan designates most of the site as mixed-use residential, which is identified as primarily residential with neighborhood scale retail and personal service uses. Then there's some smaller portions of the site, which include mixed-use business and general business designations with both, which both support a mix of housing and commercial uses. Next slide, please. So the site is zoned BC2, which is defined as business areas containing retail centers serving a number of neighborhoods, which retail-type stores will predominate, although residential uses are permitted under the district. Next slide, please. Just a few really quick notes about the context of the site. There's residential uses along Spruce Street, retail to the east with a grocery store, deli, and other commercial uses. There's four-story retail office building to the south, along with a dispensary. Mike's Camera across Folsom is Greenleaf Park and the Iron Flats mixed-use building. Might also note that the Boulder and White Rock Ditch parallels the site to the west, and there's a new residential building being built across the street from the site at Folsom and Spruce. Next slide, please. And then the site itself consists of several warehouse and retail buildings with auto and scooter repair. Future, I'm sorry, a furniture store, a thrift store, and as indicated in your packet, there's a building at the northeast corner of the site known as the Mecca Building, which was recently surveyed and determined to be eligible for a local landmark designation, which I'll discuss in more detail in a moment. Next slide, please. The proposal itself consists of 63 attached residential units in two phases that include 16 townhomes and 47 apartments. The applicant has indicated their intent to include eight onsite permanently affordable units. The proposal also includes some amenity uses for residents, a 12-foot north-south multi-use path, as well as an east-west sidewalk connection into the site, along with roof decks and some other ancillary open spaces on the site. Next slide, please. Then because we're in concept plan, the applicant also provided some architectural precedent images that illustrate contemporary building forms with the use of patterned brick and wood, along with some massing diagrams that help illustrate building modulations, and really how the buildings would lay out onto the site, but ultimately, the applicant would need to demonstrate consistency with the adopted design guidelines for the Boulder Valley Regional Center, and would need to consult with the Design Advisory Board as part of a future site review application. So, that said, the planning board heard the concept plan application on September 2nd, and were asked to consider three issues. The first was whether the proposal was consistent with the comp plan land use designations and the BC2 zoning. The board generally found that the proposal was consistent with the comp plan and the intent of the zoning for the area. Next slide, please. But the next key issue was, was really related to the east-west alley connection required by the Boulder Valley Regional Center transportation connections planned halfway between Spruce and Pearl Street, between Folsom and 26, and this connection wasn't represented in the applicant's initial concept plan for the site, which you can see illustrated, you know, bifurcating the block here. Some challenges in providing vehicular access were identified. Those included bringing a portion of the white rock, bridging a portion of the White Rock Ditch, as well as the fact that the access from Folsom Street would likely be limited to a right-in, right-out configuration, but the board did acknowledge the applicant's intent to substantially reduce curb cuts throughout the site, but did emphasize the importance of access and circulation in and through the site for all modes. The board also discussed whether a bike-and-ped-only connection as a substitute may be more suitable, but ultimately, I think the connection may benefit from a review by the Transportation Advisory Board, and certainly additional analysis through the site review process. Next slide, please. So as part of the discussion with the planning board, the applicant indicated that the connection and preservation of the building at the northeast corner of the site that we identified as a potential local landmark would reduce the overall unit count by 17 units, including six of the permanently affordable units. The board had a discussion about shifting some of the building massings shown on the plan away from the existing landmark-eligible building at the northeast corner of the site. It was also acknowledged that, given the location and the fact that Appendix J is now Sunset, the applicant could request a height modification through the site review process to strategically place fourth-story building elements internal to the site and toward the existing four-story building that fronts on the Pearl Street. The board also indicated that a height modification could also be considered to help introduce a better variety of roof forms throughout the site, not just solely to offset units lost to connections and preservation. Next slide, please. And so finally, the board concurred with staff's recommendation regarding the existing building located at Spruce and 26th Street, like I said, known as the Mecca Building, and that the applicant should consider integrating it into the site. As indicated in the memo, a recent architectural inventory was completed on the building, which was provided in attachment B of your memo this evening, and concluded that the building is eligible, like I said, for local landmark designation due to some noteworthy architectural characteristics in this location, which kind of relates back to Boulder's commercial, retail, and transportation history. And then before we conclude this evening, I'd like to quickly acknowledge the testimony from the public at the planning board where we had five speakers address the board, mainly in support of the application, as well as, you know, numerous emails that have been sent to council in advance of this discussion regarding the proposal, those have all been made part of the record and have been submitted to the applicant for their future consideration. And, you know, while the board expressed broad support on the concept, I think there are still a number of key issues identified that the applicant would need to study further should the application advance into the site review process, so. With that said, I'm happy to respond to questions, like I said, we have Ali Gittfar from the applicant team available here, as well as a number of other staff, so. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you, Charles, and with that, let's start with questions, please, I see Aaron.
Charles, thanks for that, appreciate it, very informative, my question is a timing one. So if we voted to call this out tonight, is this something that we could schedule in November at a meeting with the new council? And I ask just because obviously this, this particular council would not be reviewing an eventual site review, but if they did in a typical timeframe, it would be the next council that did it, so just wondering if it's possible for the next council to review the concept plan.
I might rely on the city attorney's office a bit here, but my memory serves me, I think we have 60 days to actually hold the hearing, so I think we would just, if, if we were getting into mid-November, I think we may be cutting that close. I think the code also says that if we run afoul of the 60 days, if the applicant reviews, agrees to a subsequent hearing date, that that's also acceptable as well, but I would defer to Hella and Sandra on that.
That's exactly correct, Charles, I think you stated it very well. It would really just be something, if we wanted to go beyond the 60 days, the parties just have to mutually agree, so.
Thanks for that.
Super, anything else, Sarah? Okay, we got Rachel, Mark, and Mary, Rachel.
Thanks, Sam, thanks, Charles, you mentioned it might be good to have Tab weigh in, was that formally requested, or is this the time that that gets formally requested?
I think either now, or if the application were called up for a review by council, that would be helpful direction for staff to take it to Tab to talk about that connection.
So, thanks for that, Sam, this may be a process question for you, then, would we want to separately take a straw poll, and if, if council were amenable to inviting Tab to weigh in?
Yeah, I think what we should do first would be to see if there's interest in calling it up, and if there is interest in calling it up, I, I think that would be a time to give advice about what companies that call up.
All right, thanks, my next question is about the landmarks building, how many square feet is that?
You know, that's a great question, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I could look that up real quick.
All right, I guess what I was wondering in part is like, it looks like a, you know, an interesting building, and I can understand why people might be inclined to landmark it without weighing in, because I believe that would be quasi-judicial, and I don't want to overstep there, but do, do buildings ever get, this may be silly, and maybe my Indiana talking, but do we ever move buildings, like, if it's a great building worth landmarking, but it's in a spot that we want to put housing, can that be done? Like, I was looking at it, and that's a great-looking possible ADU, or, you know.
Sure, yeah, we've actually moved the, the depot from, in the parking lot where the Whole Foods near 30th and drawing a blank right now.
30th and Pearl.
30th and Pearl, I'm sorry, I was drawing a blank across the street from the Transit Village, that was a building that we actually moved about a decade ago. We've moved several homes off of Grandview Hill near University to other locations on University Hill, James, I just saw you pop on the camera, did you have any other examples? I wouldn't say that it's easy, I think it also requires a tremendous amount of commitment, I think, from the developer, but, James?
Thanks, Charles, James Hewitt, Historic Preservation, you know, we actually have moved a number of buildings in Boulder. It's not generally the first approach from a historic preservation point of view, but certainly it has been done. You know, I think there's sometimes a concern about taking the building out of its context, you know, this building's obviously been where it was constructed since 1972, so. And one of the, one of the criterion for evaluation is environmental significance, and it was found to be significant for its location on that pretty highly visible corner.
Sure, you know, 1972 doesn't sound that long ago, I think a couple of us in council might submit. Sorry, that's a Gen X joke, okay, well, maybe the applicant can tell us how, how they, how they feel about that possibility, I'm just curious. And then also, I think for Charles, just wondering, you know, there's been some community requests that we get, that we look for ways to get more affordable housing, more units on site. To do that, would we need to call it up, and can we require that if we wanted to?
Well, I think it would be helpful to have the direction from council, I think both from the applicant and for staff through the context of a call-up discussion, so I think that we could vet the, the issues, but certainly council could direct staff to either, you know, look into whatever available tools there are to help either increase, you know, density on the site, or help achieve whatever outcome, you know, council would like to see.
And then in terms of like, sort of what, what are, what we are empowered to do here, if, if, if it was council's will to have, say, more affordable units or more, more units altogether, is that something that we can mandate or require, is that just sort of advice that we're giving, because I'm, I guess I'm a little reluctant to call it up if we don't have any teeth to our suggestions?
Well, I think right now through the concept plan discussion, the direction is non-binding. So I think it really is just input and direction at this point. Again, I would defer to our colleagues in the attorney's office as to whether or not you can actually mandate the requirement for affordable housing on the property, I believe that you can, but once again, I would defer to Hella and Sandra.
Rachel, is that a question then to Hella or Sandra?
I think it is.
Okay, so, so the question? Okay. So, so the question is, what are the limits of what can be required in concept plan? Is that the question?
And I'm not sure if Hella is on or not. I know she had a scheduling issue. She, she might not be here, but I'm happy to try and jump in. So my understanding is that the only exception that would allow for a certain percentage of units on the property to be permanently affordable units would be if it involved a grant of height modification. And so there, I believe that that's the circumstance. And Charles, you can correct me if, if there are other tools available, but that, that's the restriction that I'm aware of.
Right. I think that would be the most, you know, prominent requirement. I think that would relate to the requirement of additional permanently affordable housing.
Okay, thanks.
Right. Very good. Then we have Mark and Mary. Mark?
Charles, thank you for the presentation. Under inclusionary zoning, we would normally expect twenty-five percent affordable units, correct?
Correct.
And we're getting what, six or eight on the current plan? So my question is, where's the rest?
Kurt?
Thank you, Charles. Good evening, Council. Kurt Fernhauer, Director of Housing and Human Services. So as it's proposed, typically the, the balance of that would be cash and lieu. And so we would look at it, it's a bit of a unique project because it has both ownership units as well as rental units and the inclusionary housing requirements are a little bit different for those different types. So that would help us calculate what that remaining cash and lieu would be. It's at, at concept plan, it's difficult to get into the details of that because we don't know size of units and type and, and that sort of thing. The other thing that I'll mention is that we are required to give the, the developer options. So one of the challenges, particularly at this point in the project of, of directing with a particular expectation is that you might not get that because we do have to allow the, the developer to, to make choices. However, your input is very helpful when we meet with the developer as the project goes through the entitlement process to work with them towards an outcome that we heard from, from council. And I see Hella has come up as well and she might have things to add on to that as well.
If not, I have one other question.
Mark, I think Hella's ready. Hella, I think we have two questions queued up for you. The first one was Mark's question. And then we'll come back to Rachel's. Do you want to start with Mark's?
Yeah. And could you repeat that question for me? I, I think I heard the previous question because I was listening in as I was driving, but as I switched from phone to computer, I missed Mark's question.
My, my question was, under inclusionary zoning, the, the rule of thumb I thought was the twenty-five percent affordable units. And I see six or eight. I've, I've lost the narrative on that, but my question is, where are the rest?
Yeah, as Kurt mentioned, it's still really early on in the process, but under the inclusionary housing standards for rental housing, there is, there's actually no requirement for anything to be provided on site. And usually that, those requirements are complied with through an in-lu payment into the city Affordable Housing Fund. There's other ways to comply as well. But there are limitations to the Colorado Rent Control Statute that caused the statute to be written the way it is. And I think part of the project as proposed right now would also include for sale units and our inclusionary housing standards. They state that a portion of the units has to be provided on site, but then we do have additional city manager regulations that actually allow different compliance methods as well for that. So it's, it's up to the developer to decide how to meet those requirements within the standards of the Inclusionary Housing Code.
And then just Rachel, to make sure that we got your question addressed, I believe Rachel's question, Hella, was if we call this up as a concept plan, what level of requirement are, is council able to make or is it just guidance and, and how does that work going into site plan review?
Yeah, with, with regard to providing an inclusionary housing on site, again, it, it's, it's up to the developer to decide how to meet that. And the developer can decide that up until the building permit is issued, it's not part of the site review criteria. It's part of the general zoning requirements. So it's not something that the city has required as part of the site review application if this moves forward in a site review. So it can be required through that since the, the ordinance that suspended height modifications in most parts of the town has expired, the site would be eligible for a height modification and through that affordable housing could be required unless a different criterion could be met. Although I don't think a different criterion could be met in this circumstance. So under those community benefit standards, if a height modification was requested, then under certain circumstances, affordable housing would have to be provided on site. Although caution again, whenever rented property is involved, we run into the Colorado Rent Control Statute and even under those standards, there wouldn't be a requirement for the rented portion of the housing to be provided on site.
Super. And then the one other piece of context there was Rachel had asked a question about the possibility of moving the potentially landmarked building. And I think part of the question was around what we could require either in concept plan or site plan as far as moving potentially historic building as opposed to building around it. And Rachel, please jump in if I didn't get that right. She says that was right. So it's just about, are we allowed to condition approval on moving a building that may be historically landmarked?
I think potentially I would want to take a closer look at the code for that. In site review, the way historic preservation comes in is through one of the complaint criteria and it talks about preservation of historic resources through discretionary review. And, and it seems like that may be one way to do it. So I think that might be possible, but I haven't, I haven't thought that through very far.
Okay. And, and just one more clarifying question to follow up. You mentioned insight plan review, you may or may not be able to do that, but what about a concept plan? Concept plan is feedback, so we wouldn't be able to make a requirement at concept plan. Is that right?
That's correct. Concept plan is just providing feedback and the feedback is not binding.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mark, did you have one more question that you wanted?
Yes, I did. I was wondering if, if the applicant could speak to the projected size and price points on the townhouse units.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ali. Hope you're all well. The size of the units, the fourteen townhomes that are market rate are twenty-six hundred square feet each. And the price point in today's dollars would be somewhere around two point two to two point four million dollars.
Thank you.
All right, we have Mary Emin, Junie. Mary?
Thanks, Sam. So the townhomes, I'm assuming are the for sale units.
Yes.
Okay. And then the residences are the rental units and those, is that correct?
Well.
There were, I'm sorry, there was a table that was listed and I saw the residences and I'm assuming those are rental.
Right. So phase one, we would like to do all for sale. And then phase two is right now we're struggling trying to make it work as a for sale project, but as we're all familiar with the Colorado construction statutes laws, it's very difficult to make that work, but we're trying to make that work. That's so phase two right now is rental. And just to go back to the affordable question, we would love to have these units within the forty-five, six of them that we would like to meet half of the requirements for affordable units on site, be permanently rented as affordable, but unfortunately this project isn't large enough for DHP or, or an agency like that to be interested in managing those. So when we spoke to Michelle Allen, she suggested that we, we should do cash and new for those, just so we're clear on that.
Okay. So if I understood you correctly, then your phase one is totally for sale units and your phase two would be the rental units.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And then I noticed I went on, onto the use table this afternoon and was looking at the allowed uses on BC two. And I see that efficiency living units are allowed. And one of the things that has come up from the community is they want more units on site. So, so my question is, on the rental unit side, what is the limitation on the number of units that you can have there?
Well, we're, we're, we set up this, our plans to be able to put on as many units as we could on, on these two plus acres. The way the BC two zone works, you need sixteen hundred square feet of land area per unit. And that's where the number sixty-three comes from, the number of units that we provide.
Yeah. So the limitation is the open space requirement.
That's right. And so the other thing that we tried to do is to provide not only as many units as we could, but to provide as large a variety of units as we could. So that we go from large townhomes to smaller units, but at the same time, we feel that, I don't know if you would all agree or not, but that it would be better to have two and three bedrooms and to have one bedrooms and efficiency units, just because there's so many of those being built right now around town, that the two and three bedrooms would be more useful to the community. And that's where the area of the site would allow us the volume to be able to offer larger units. We're kind of going counter to what a lot of other sites may, may be wishing or wanting to do, we're able to do this.
Okay. Thank you. And then you mentioned the difficulty in creating more onsite for sale units due to the, the issues with condo units. And, and sixteen is the maximum that you can have for sale?
No, it's actually eighteen units. There's fourteen townhomes. There's two two-story apartments. I don't know if that's the right word. And then amongst the townhomes, we can provide two affordable units as well. That, that would be for sale. So that makes eighteen.
Okay. And so that, and that's the maximum, eighteen?
Yes, eighteen plus forty-five equals sixty-three. Correct.
So did you consider with the, the first phase, the for sale phase, did you consider playing around with the number of bedrooms and, and things like that to try and get more units as well?
The way, the reason it works for, for sale in phase one is that the units are built in a vertical fashion so that they have party walls. They don't stack on top of each other. So it's not a condo project. As a result, we can build them and have less exposure to the defects law. And that's why we can do that phase one for sale. If that makes sense.
Okay.
And then the apartments, and then I, we really wanted to have more units. I mean, we wanted to maximize the number of units. So the apartments on, in phase two are stacked and it's a traditional apartment building and hence why it's going towards rental at the moment.
Okay. And then you mentioned that you're going to put six rental units on site. And, and I'm, I'm really interested in if you are able to do that, I think you should bottle it and sell it because we've never been able to, to do that in town. So that's, that's just a snarky comment.
It's really difficult. And the only thing that we could offer is to keep the units because we started as a for sale model. And therefore we had smaller units that meet IH requirements. And so we haven't changed those signs, the sizes of those units conception, meaning that in a, in a perverse way, they're more affordable, but they're compact units basically. But they're not affordable for the definition of the IH requirements.
Okay. And that kind of leads into my next question, which is, have you had any conversations with Boulder Housing Partners, about taking that second phase and maybe doing your cash and do on that site and making it a higher percentage of affordable housing?
I have not. No.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Sure.
It's very, Junie?
Thank you. And nice to meet you on Zoom, Ali, and thank you for being here. I do think most of my questions have actually been answered with the price point and the square footage. But I'm wondering just for clarity purposes, if you, because I'm trying to think, okay, if we call this up, it's because we, well, I can't speak for the entire council, but I can speak for myself. We're looking for more housing unit. We want to see more affordable housing. And we want something, a little bit of a tweak in the concept. So the question is, I understand everything that you're saying, but as the owner of that property, would you be open to increasing the number of sales unit and decreasing the size for phase one? I know you're trying to answer that earlier. I still didn't feel that it was clear enough for me.
Okay. We've packed in there in phase one, this for sale side of the project. We've packed in as many as we can so that we can keep them vertical and reasonable width so you can park under these units. So we could increase the number of affordable units, yes, by splitting these townhomes into halves, if you like. I think that would still work. But I'm not sure how to increase the number beyond the building form that we have without getting into trouble with how we might get sideways with the defects law. Does that make sense?
Thank you. I think that helps a lot just to hear you saying that, hey, I don't know what that would look like, but looking into, you know, decreasing the size, even if it's two half, but thank you for that answer.
Sure.
And I have a quick question, Ali. We went through enormous gyrations in our legislative agenda for a couple, three years about construction defects and I, as mayor, have heard many conversations about this, but that law was changed two years ago. And what we have heard from people through Metro Mayor's caucus is that change was great. We've doubled and tripled the number of condos that are being built in the Denver area because of that. So I had the impression that the construction defects challenges with condo manufacturing had been solved by doing what the builders had requested at the legislature. But it sounds like you still see challenges with that. So can you help me understand that? It's not really about this project, but just why, why is construction defect still entering the conversation when I thought we had fixed that?
I wish we had. I actually had a conversation with George, George Burke, one of our attorneys last week about this because we really want to do the second phase as a for sale. And he told us that case law comes up constantly and things move around a lot. So as I wrote my memo to you guys this, this morning, one of the things that we are, we want to still continue down this path of examining whether we can do these for sale or not. But it's going to take some time and he's going to do some research for that. I do know that talking to the architects, and actually I'm an architect myself, I don't know if you guys. that talking to the architects, and actually I'm an architect myself, I don't know if you guys knew that or not, but talking to um Shears, Atkins, Rockmore, our architects, what they tell me is that their costs for doing a for-sale condo project are twenty percent extra. Um they, we also have to cover their uh cost for professional liability insurance as well. The construction of the buildings goes from a wood frame on a podium to a fully concrete structure because they're, you know, with a, with the exposure that one would have for eight years, you cannot allow any kind of movement in the building whatsoever. And then the package of the architects put together becomes substantially more involved in terms of detailing, so that everybody's sure that these buildings are gonna last a long time without causing problems for for the inhabitants.
Good. So the short answer sounds like there's still concerns with construction defects for condos, even though they've been reduced.
Yes, and I actually I'm not even sure if they've been reduced, but.
But what I can assure you, they have, because.
We all want that.
Well, well, it was a subject of a lot of work for people to be able to make that change because the trial lawyers were not in favor of it, but the uh developers were. So I I know that it eventually broke through. So doesn't sound like it's settled in yet, if it if it has been meaningful enough, but that that's not about this project, but thank you for the answer.
And just so to be clear, George was one of the senators of of the defects law himself, so he he's very much uh knowledgeable about this.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Rachel.
Just a follow-up question for um. I think you just said maybe that you had sent an email this morning.
I did, I thought.
The applicant, and I don't think I got it, so I just wanted to flag that I know if if there's something in that that you that you think we've read, I'm not sure if I'm the only one who didn't get it, that maybe um we didn't receive it.
Oh, I sent it to council at Boulder dot gov, something dot gov, but maybe it was.
Just flagging that I don't know if anybody else got it, but um I I don't have the benefit of whatever might have been in it.
I didn't see it either.
There are high points, maybe. I don't know if if there's a a timeline here for applicant presentation, but uh maybe maybe tell us the highlights if there's something we needed to know.
The um it was just basically a summary of a lot of things that we've already discussed, um just explaining that the two phases of the project partially dependent on longer lease terms uh on the east side of the site versus the west side. Um partially because we really are trying to do as, you know, half sixty-three units on onsite for them to be the as large as possible, so they're they can accommodate families. And that, you know, the whole argument about the rental versus for-sale that we've gone over already.
Thanks.
And then the one other item was the um the issue about the vehicular connection between twenty-sixth and Folsom, which you guys touched on early on when Charles was presenting.
Thank you, Ally. Can I ask you a quick question as well, um kind of to follow up with Rachel's? We have the opportunity to call this up, and if we call it up, we'll have more time to go into each of these points in depth. Would you prefer that we called it up at concept plan or not?
The earlier the better. If you would like to have um input, influence, whatever you'd like to call it, the better, you know, the hard part for any any development team is dealing with the timeline. These properties are super expensive and it's very difficult to manage holding on to them because of that. And so if there's any thoughts or comments, the sooner they come, the better.
Thank you, Ally. It's very helpful. Bob?
I just wanted to, Ally, uh Bob Yates, I wanted to follow up on Sam's question. As as Charles indicated, I think we're legally required to um if there is a call up to to have the hearing on that within sixty days, which unfortunately, the timing for that is not working out real well for us, but you can waive that sixty day requirement. I'm looking at the calendar, sixty days from now, versus is at the end of November. We do have a council meeting. It's really the first full council meeting of the new council on November thirtieth. That could be a possibility. I think that's about sixty-two or sixty-three days from now. A more likely date would be um the first council meeting in December. If council was inclined to call this up, would you consent to either a late November or mid-December meeting?
Well, um Bob, obviously, the earlier the better. So if you could squeeze me in in November, I'd very much appreciate that.
Yeah, the challenge is is that this council meets for the last time on November ninth and and uh if you were to receive a call up, you prob uh on concept, you probably want the same council to be looking at your site review. So the first time uh the new council is seated is the sixteenth of November, but that is the day they're actually sworn in. And then then there's Thanksgiving. So I'm just, I'm just suggesting that the two alternatives, two logical alternatives might be the November thirtieth, or I believe we have a regular meeting uh on December fourteenth. Um and so I'm just asking if if council was inclined to call it up, would you consent to one of those dates? Because I think we would require your consent to go beyond sixty days.
I think the, it's difficult for me to sort of agree to a much later date again, because I'm under the gun with time and how long I have with this property under contract. Can I reach out to you after I've had some time to think about it, and hopefully I'll have the right email?
Sure, although I think we have to make our consent or decision on call up here in the next few minutes, but uh it sounds like you, it sounds like you can't give us unequivocal um uh agreement, which is fine. I'm I'm putting you on the spot, so I don't I don't blame you for that.
All right. Well, with that, I think I'll bring it back to council and say, do we want to call it up, yes or no? Um and I think the people that should lead this will be people who will be on the next council or even have a shot at it. So um with that, Erin and then Rachel.
Hey, uh Ali, thanks for all those answers and your explanations. I appreciate what you're you're trying to do here. So um I I am interested in calling it up, not because I feel like the the project should be turned down, but just um because I think it would be helpful to give some input on some of these thorny issues, you know, surrounding the um you know, the the unit size and placement and and such like that. So I I think if you had the the new council or the people who would ultimately be the ones deciding whether to approve or deny um the project, I think it could be really helpful to get input on on these questions. So it is something that I'd be interested in doing. I I think we probably could um squeeze it in at the sixty-two day mark on November thirtieth. So, Ali, I realize that you can't answer that right now, but it would just be probably a couple of days outside of that window. Um and that's probably doable. So and while I acknowledge we can't um force affordable housing requirements, and in particular way, we can weigh in on unit size, uh placement type, et cetera. That's all I got.
Rachel.
I guess I'm I'm with Erin. Um it seems like there's enough here to probably call it up. Um and I would just say to staff, if we do call it up, I think it would be a really good opportunity um to educate the new council, because these um call-ups, both concept and site review, can be confusing for those of us who didn't serve on planning boards. So I I think it might be a a good early opportunity to really baby step us through the process if and that's not exactly directly relevant to this call-up decision, but if it happens, I think that will be um a helpful, helpful situation to pan out and really start us uh off with some really good understanding of of what we're looking at under concept and then how it will be different at that site, site review. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel. Junie.
I support what everything that Erin and Rachel brought forward. I agree that calling it up will give us an opportunity to over the site review concept plan and then give us the opportunity to give some direction on the size of the property, um even though we won't be able to make a lot of some of the changes that uh Erin mentioned, but I think this is a great opportunity uh for us as a community moving forward to give some directions to uh Mr. Ally.
Thank you, Junie. And then we've got the last two who will be on the next council, Bob and Mark, and Mark's maybe, but we're hopeful. Bob?
I I hope Mark's on the next council too. Um I look forward to what he has to say. Ally, I think I think we will call this up. Um I I think it's actually to your benefit to hear what we have to say or sooner rather than later. And we we could not call it up and be be silent on it, and the next time you visit with us is onsite review sometime next year. And that may not be the time you want to be hearing from us. I think to the extent we have concerns, issues, di- dialogue, discussion, this has been a very helpful dialogue tonight. I I'd like, look forward to continuing that in November. And I think it's in everyone's interest, the community and yours and in ours, for us to continue this dialogue in November. As Erin said, I think the earliest we could probably squeeze this in is November thirtieth. So if you could give us a couple of days of grace, that would be really, really great. And I I would be in favor of calling this up so we can continue this uh very fruitful discussion.
Thanks, Bob. Mark.
Uh yeah, I have nothing new to add other than to say, um I would be in favor of calling this up as well of all of the reasons that have been stated by my colleagues.
Fair enough. And November thirtieth it is.
Very good. All right. So I think we have a a bit of a formality here. Uh Erin.
Oh, well, just since it sounds like it's the little council to call it up, one thing I would just ask of staff is, you know, there's talk about the uh rent control laws, the state legislature and how they inhibit different options. You know, there was legislation passed in this last session that changed those rules. So we can just make sure that we've analyzed how those updated rules um play out in in this circumstance. I appreciate it.
And I guess I'll.
Go ahead.
So I think we need a vote on whether to call it up, right? I think we're still in the um I believe we have the will to do it, but would someone like to move that we call it up?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Does anyone object on council to calling this up? Seeing none, it's unanimous that this is called up. Thank you all. And I will, I will also say I won't be here to hear it, but if there is anything about construction defects, um Hella or Sandra, it might be interesting to know what has changed. And um just for the legislative purpose, if that's not enough, it might be helpful to understand from a developer in a particular circumstance what might still be needed. So maybe our legislative subcommittee can understand that going forward. Any other comments? I have some hands up still. I've got Rachel and Mary.
I was just curious on the tab question. I understand that we have called it up, so maybe we will get to tab then, but sometimes we forget things, so I wondered if we wanted to just invite tab now and then that's done.
I think that's a good point. Staff, do you have any feedback to us on that? Can you get this to tab? Is that reasonable to do?
Um in advance of council's discussion or subsequent?
Rachel.
I was suggesting maybe tonight is the discussion, and if we think we want to invite tab, maybe we just you know, if there's an notify for that or whatever's needed, then then that could move forward.
So so Rachel, I think you're intending that tabs see this before the concept review in November. Is that correct, or are you saying either way is fine?
I'm not sure, because I haven't done this before. Just not sure what I'm asking for timeline-wise, but I know that we have to proactively invite tab and that we've talked about that a bit, that that's helpful. And and since Charles mentioned this is a project where that makes sense, um I'm just worried about it slipping through the cracks if we don't, since it's, since I wrote it down tonight, just figuring maybe we'd act on it.
Super. Well, no, I think it's a really good question. Charles, uh i- if we're putting you on the spot to answer tonight, maybe it would just be helpful if um you could put something out on hotline about how to do that, because this is kind of new, I think, to council that, you know, at this stage that we might ask tab to weigh in. So if you could give us some thoughts, maybe between now and November thirtieth, uh we can give some guidance if we got options.
We'd be happy to.
All right, thank you. And then I've got Mary and Junie. Mary?
Yeah, um thank you for accepting that um extra two days um for doing the call up. Um I won't be here either, but I wanted to just throw out an idea for you to consider um as you're trying to figure out your options. And that would be to have a conversation with Boulder Housing Partners and see if you might be able to turn that portion of the project into a higher percentage of affordable housing. And or make it a hundred percent, you know, there there are ways, I believe, to do that, um but um exploring it might um be something that you could do. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you, Mary. Junie.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add um I was, I'm really hopeful the discussion that we have tonight. I'm glad that we're having it. I was slightly, what's the word? The word is not sad or unhappy, but I was hoping uh Ally would say, yes, let's decrease the size and let's create all affordable housing units there. But I understand there's different constraints in life and we can't all, we can't get everything that we want. Um but just hearing that there might be this opportunity for half the size of the property and that would probably add uh money to our affordable housing program. So thank you. I think that's uh we can't have everything that we want, but we can, you know, we can push the ball forward where we get something in between that could really help uh people in the community, ensuring that, you know, people who need affordable housing gets more of it through the project that you're creating. Um I think I wanted to go back based on the question that I sent to hotline, and I don't know if, Ally, you had the opportunity to see those questions as well. But certainly some community members have. Um and it had to do with the landmarking of the O'Blonge Building. And I mentioned, I wanted to find out more about the landmarks and the lot landmarking and whether the landmarks board were part of that. And so far, I I did get the answer from uh our colleague, Charles. And mentioned, no, that's the recommendation from staff. And I think also, you know, most of the community members on li- headline get the same uh response as well. They did get to see response. But I think part of the question was also about equity. And my understanding is that, you know, when we're thinking of equity and access to housing, is landmarking this particular property something that should take place as opposed to creating more affordable housing? So to be in line with, I think, something that Rachel mentioned earlier about having the transportation um advisory board involved. I thought as well, maybe the Human Rights Commission should be involved in this particular project and weigh in as well, because again, if we're talking about landmarking a property, which I am very much for landmarking, similar to a lot of community members, we want to preserve, you know, certain buildings in the community and ensure that, you know, they are here for the next generation. But at the same time, what does that really mean to providing more affordable housing to community members? You know, what is the balance that we are trying to maintain? So I'm thinking either the equity tool or having the Human Rights Commission as part of that discussion as well, so that they could weigh in.
Thank you, Junie. And I see that we have a couple staff hands up. I see Hella and Charles. Hello, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Sam. Um I wanted to address the referral to tab. Tab can only weigh in if requested by city council, and I recommend that if city council wants to refer to tab, that that be done by motion. And if you wanted that to happen before a council consideration of the concept plan, then please know that tab is meeting on October eleventh and November eighth. Um so if if that's the desire, then I, it might be a good idea to vote on that tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that guidance. So with that, I will turn to council and look for a motion to refer this to tab.
I'm moved.
Second.
Great. Any council members object? Okay, I see none, but I see Mary's hand. Mary, is that new? Nope. Oh. Okay, so we have uh voted to send this to tab, and I think, Hella, either one of those dates would work as long as council can hear back from tab prior to the November thirtieth call up.
Um I think Erica might be better to speak to what availability is there on the tap calendar. But yeah, I I think the hope is to fit it in in one of those two days.
So there's certainly certainly ability to um sit on either one of the um tap agendas on either day. And it's really determined by um planning staff and then the applicant being able to bring forward, you know, the um concept plan um for them to review, so that it works around that timing.
Okay, super. Uh council, I'll just ask, does anyone have a preference as to whether it's the first or second meeting, or is it a matter of just having it done? All right, Erica, I think it's a matter of just getting it done, so whichever works best for staff and tab.
Okay, we'll get it done.
Awesome. And then, Ally, did you have something on this?
I was just gonna push for the earlier date.
Okay, um it won't affect when council sees it, but uh you you've heard that, Erica, so and Junie. Wait, your hand is up. Wait, your hand is up.
Yeah, I did have my hands up and I, it's about the comments about the Human Rights Council, whether this is something that should go through the Human Rights Council as well as tab.
Okay, I'll turn to council. Would you like to make your pitch, Junie? Or would you like council to discuss it? I don't know that I've ever heard about HRC taking up a planning issue, but maybe that's something council wants.
Well, not the planning aspect of it, but looking at whether what's the word? As I mentioned to you earlier, I understand the landmark of buildings around Boulder. However, for equity purposes, is landmarking this particular property is within or values of equity, basically?
Aaron. And Rachel.
Yeah, Junie, I appreciate you raising the issue. It's, it's an excellent question and point. I, I don't know that this would be something that we would send like the applicant to do a full presentation like another hearing on, but maybe instead something where HRC, the, the, the city staff could present this as a kind of as, as the issues involved and kind of get their feedback from an overall policy perspective of the potential tension between landmarking and additional housing units. Maybe something on that order.
You're Aaron. Rachel?
Um, yeah, I guess I was thinking I, I had raised a kind of similar question when we were looking at landmarking, like an old oh, auto parking, Amy, you know, like if it was a hotel where it was more of a drive up car port thing, you know, around like, is it, does it make sense to landmark something that that may have a better current value than the historic value that it, that it preserves? And so to me, I think it's probably a larger question that maybe we want to talk about at the retreat, like, do we want to look at, at the, at the considerations that go into landmarking and look at the code, maybe, or or whatever needs to be looked at rather than a case by case. Feels a little bit like we, we aren't getting to the heart of the issue if we're not looking holistically at what goes into landmarking. So appreciate the point as well. I'm not sure exactly where to go with it.
Mark. You know, I, I'm, I tend to be a very, very strong supporter of landmarking, but I would ask staff to maybe hone their arguments on this particular piece of property, which they, you know, the, the report noted that it's doesn't meet National Register or State Register criteria. And it's ineligible for landmarking on a historic basis. So we're kind of relying upon a, what I think is a kind of a slender read here to justify landmarking the property. Its architectural significance as quote an Oblong box gas station unquote, which was an architectural form I, I was hitherto unaware of its significance in the world of landmarking and architecture. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a contest between more housing and landmarking. I'd like to get an argument as to why, just from a landmarking perspective, this, this piece of property should be so designated. Because I just didn't see the arguments being very strong.
And Mark, I'm gonna interpret that for staff as you'd like to hear that. Assuming that you're on the next council at the November 30th, concept plan review, some inputs as to the landmarking status.
Yes, and if not, I'll watch on television.
All right, there you go. Mary?
Yeah, I was trying not to weigh in because I'm not going to be here, but I can't help myself. So I was just gonna say with respect to that proposed landmark. I actually think it's a cool building. And in looking at the use table, it could be like an art studio kind of art space. And it's got those two potentially wonderful bays that could turn into something that could be really special for the community. And when I think about it, six units of market rate versus something that the whole community might be able to enjoy. To me, in terms of looking at it equitably, I think that a benefit for the whole community is better than six more market rate units. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mary. I'll just weigh in briefly on this. It, it does sound to me like this is a big picture question of equity in landmarking. I think it's a very interesting question. And it seems like that would be a great work plan item for the next council to talk about at the retreat as well. So with that, Kurt, I see you've got a hand up.
Uh, thank you. And I appreciate the conversation. So just to be clear, it's the Human Relations Commission that we would put this in front of. We, we haven't we haven't had this kind of conversation at the HRC. So it is new territory for us. We're, we're happy to do that simply on your interest in doing that. I'm not sure when it would be scheduled. So it'd be nice for council just to give us direction on if they would prefer that kind of input. And then we could see if we can make that, or if and when we can make that happen.
Thank you, Kurt. So, Junie, I guess, having heard the conversation, do you want to put a motion forward about sending this to HRC? Or how would you like to proceed?
Yeah, sure. Let's do that. Well, I motion that we bring the concept review of the Oblong building to the HRC for further discussion on the intersection of equity and landmarking.
Okay, is there a second before I move on? I'm not seeing a second. In that case, I'm going to turn to Sandra because Sandra had raised her hand.
Yeah, thank you, Sam. I, I just wanted to just weigh in and just say that there isn't anything currently in our code that would address this. And, and so I would be much more in favor of a more holistic discussion about it by council in terms of how that process would work. And that was the only input that I wanted to provide. So thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Rachel, and then Erin.
Actually, Sandra said pretty much what I was gonna say, just that I think we need to to look at this in the, the bigger picture. And, and I've been a little bit confused like by the landmarking is quasi judicial. So I don't, you know, I don't want to weigh in on exactly how it would be a landmark application ahead of time. And I'm not sure how it would interplay with HRC weighing in on that if it's not in like conceived of in the code. So I, I hope that we will look at it and as part of our work plan.
Erin.
Well, I, I was about to second the motion, but Sandra's legal point makes, makes me hesitate here just about the quasi judicial aspect of the landmarking. And, and so when you're from the city attorney, that might be problematic. But, Junie, I, I wonder, you know, can we, could we ask the HRC to start to talk about, you know, the interplay of landmarking and equity in a, in a larger sense? If, if we're not kind of legally really allowed to send it to them specifically in this one case?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I, I accept. And I wonder too, can they send us feedback before we get, before the next planned discussion that we will have in November?
Do you, do you want me to answer that?
Sure, Sandra, if you, if you want to take a crack at it, sure.
I, I, so, Junie, I would have some concerns about the, this particular project, having comments because of the quasi judicial nature of the landmarks board. So if you wanted just some general comments about the process, I don't think that there is any issue about that. But if it were specific to a, a project, that might be an issue. Thanks.
Adam.
Just as a point of compromise, it sounds like we're not going to get direction from council to go to HRC, but HRC members are always welcome to give their individual opinions on anything we do. So for what that's worth, you know, if we just mention it to them, maybe they'll have individual opinions that they want to give on their own volition.
Thank you, Adam. Junie?
I just have a quick question because I think it was mentioned earlier that the concept discussion is quasi judicial, the concept review, is it? Can somebody confirm that?
So, so concept plan is not quasi judicial, but landmarking is quasi judicial and site plan review hearings are quasi judicial. Sandra, was that right? Landmarking and site plan review are quasi judicial, but concept plans are not. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and Helen, she might want to step in as well, but I know for sure landmarking is.
Yeah, the site plan review is definitely quasi judicial as well. And since we're dealing with a specific application for a property, that concept plan is a step in the process towards a site review. It's required in advance of it. We should follow the procedures that are set forth in the code. And there is no clear procedure that this can be referred to to the HRC and that the HRC has purview over it. The code is silent and I just skimmed the provisions of the, what the tasks of the HRC is and it, it seems a little bit outside of the development review process and, and the tasks that are being done, they are considering that we're making decisions about the property owners' property rights. They're more agency directed.
Yeah. So, so I'm going to propose something here and feel free to kick it around or tell me no or whatever, but I would propose that we ask the city manager to take this subject to the HRC through Kurt and get the HRC to begin a conversation about it. And perhaps that could be something they put in their letter to the next council before the retreat to weigh in on whether they want to take this up or not. But it seems to me from what we've heard from the legal folks that, you know, these site plan review processes and landmarking processes are quasi judicial on their criteria based, which means that to have an impact on on that, that process means changing the criteria probably. And so maybe we want to get HRC to weigh in on that. So Nurya, would that be something that you and Kurt could take to the HRC and just kick off a conversation?
We absolutely can. I, I believe that this is such uncharted territory that it may just be wise to talk about the concept of landmarking and equity generally as we move forward and bring that. I'll talk to Kurt, bring that to the HRC and make sure we've thought of additional ways of how to move forward in the city. So we can commit to that.
Okay, very good. Counsel, any thoughts on that? Okay, so it looks like that's a start down that pathway. Very good. And it seems like we have a call up complete and we have a request to tab to weigh in before the next council takes this up as a concept plan review. So I think we're done. Any other points? Doesn't look like it. Very good. Thank you very much. Charles and planning staff, Hella, as well as the applicant. So thanks to all of you. And Ali, you want to make a final comment?
I was just gonna say regarding this landmark building that initially we were against it as a team, but we came around to accepting it and embracing the building itself.
Okay.
And so anyway, just to put it out there that you know, as an architect, I'm, I'm fine with it. And it, the, the loss of the units was made whole for us by the, by planning board agreeing to ground us a fourth floor over part of the site. So that helped to offset that issue to meet the housing requirements that we're all trying to meet as well. Thank you all for your time, by the way. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's very helpful. Thank you, everyone. And Alicia, with that, I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
All right, sir. Next on our agenda is item four, which is our public hearing. Under 4A, we have the consideration of the following items related to the 2022 budget. First item is an introduction, first reading and consideration of a motion to order published by title only. Ordinance 8505, adopting a budget for the city of Boulder, Colorado for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of January, 2022, and ending on the last day of December, 2022, a setting for the related details. Item number two, introduction, first reading and consideration of a motion to order published by title only. 8506, this ordinance 8506, establishing the 2021 City of Boulder Property Tax Mill levies, which are to be collected by the County of Boulder, State of Colorado, within the City of Boulder in 2022 for payment of expenditures by the City of Boulder, County of Boulder, State of Colorado, and setting forth related details. Item number three, introduction, first reading and consideration of a motion to order published by title only. Ordinance 8507, appropriating money to defray expenses and liabilities of the City of Boulder, Colorado for the 2022 fiscal year of the City of Boulder, commencing on the first day of January, 2022, and ending on the last day of December, 2022, and setting forth related details. And item number four, introduction, first reading and consideration of a motion to order published by title only. Ordinance 8508, amending chapter four dash 20 and section three dash eight dash three of the BRC 1981, changing certain fees and setting forth related details.
Very good. Thank you, Alicia. And with that, I'll turn to you, Nurya.
Great. Counsel, thanks so much for the opportunity to present our recommended budget for the coming year. I know you're all fully aware of the impact the pandemic has had on our community and on us as an organization, an impact we're frankly still feeling today. Unfortunately, that impact manifested itself by both requiring us to reduce our services and FTEs and requiring the city to provide additional unexpected and unplanned for resources to serve our community when they needed it most. The recommended budget we put forward to you today, a budget of $462.5 million overall, with an operating budget of over 300, 300 million, is a testament to the city's resilience. Our revenue expectations have been more favorable than anticipated, which has led us to cautious, to be cautiously optimistic as you'll hear more about shortly. The budget also leverages the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation. And while we have targeted about 20% of those funds to address some immediate needs and service restorations, we hope to get your and community's input on how best to leverage the remaining 16 million in the future. Importantly, the development of this budget also leveraged our racial equity action plan by first requiring departments to articulate who would benefit from a service being restored and who would be hurt if a program remained unfunded. And then using that information to prioritize those requests to make sure that we were addressing the need of those that have been disproportionate, disproportionately impacted during this time of crisis. So as you'll hear from staff, you'll start to recognize some themes in the recommended budget. Restoration of services, leveraging the tremendous innovation and agility of our staff who quickly shifted service delivery to better respond to community needs during the pandemic. We look forward now to bringing back increased capacity that will service our community faster and give much needed relief to our amazing employees who found themselves stretched thin as the city found itself needing to furlough 741 employees during the pandemic. Two, a recommitment to innovation and service excellence. Even as we had to rethink our services during the pandemic, we continue to look for ways to innovate, to be data driven and to constantly look for opportunities to improve and enhance our service offerings in many unique and new ways. And thirdly, and really critical to, on my perspective, this budget seeks to honor and support our talented staff while also maintaining and remaining an employer of choice throughout the region and beyond. In addition to attracting new employees to the organization, we hope too to recognize and retain our existing workforce by restoring well deserved merit increases for our Boulder Municipal Employees Association and our non-union employees. The budget too will also recognize and considers employees with the International Association of Firefighters and the Boulder Police Officers Association, who are scheduled to receive a general salary increase in 2022 in accordance with their contracts. Beyond our operational needs, the upcoming presentation will also demonstrate how we propose to support our capital and maintenance needs with an overall capital budget of approximately 162 million across all our funds. So as our local economy continues to grow, we too hope to continue to So as our local economy continues to grow, we too hope to continue to grow stronger and be able to scale existing programs and introduce new ones in the future. But for now, we believe this budget brings a forward looking but measured plan for the coming year as we monitor the existing impacts of the ongoing pandemic on our continued economic recovery and growth. I'm profoundly grateful to all our staff and in particular, our extraordinary CFO and the entire budget team who helped shape and propose our 22, 2022 recommended budget and welcome the opportunity to share our proposed approach with you. We have all our departments well represented in this meeting should questions come up after the presentation. But first, I'll turn to our CFO, Cheryl Patelley, to kick this off. Cheryl?
Thanks, Nurya. Good evening, Counsel. We're going to wait a second. Mark will be driving our presentation tonight. Mark, would you mind putting the presentation up, please? Thank you. Next slide. So we'll start the presentation with an economic update. This evening, we have Rich Wobekine and, and Robert McNown from CU to provide that to you tonight. The 2022 budget overview will be presented by me and then I will turn it over to Mark Wolf, our senior budget manager, to talk about the 22 restorations and investments. And finally, Kara Skinner, our assistant finance director, will talk to you about the 22 to 27 capital improvement program. Next slide. So now I will turn it over to Rich and Robert.
Well, thank you very much, Cheryl. And it's a pleasure to be here with you, representing the lead school team. Myself, Professor McNown, who you'll hear from in a few minutes, and Brian Lewandowski, who is in the air as we speak right now. So Brian will be part of our presentation tonight. We very much enjoy working with the staff and we couldn't say it better than you just heard it from the leadership that the staff has worked tirelessly and we're very impressed with all of the efforts and hopefully we've helped inform the decisions as they go along. I, I guess if I wanted to summarize what I'm going to say over the next few minutes, it's basically, we obviously have a more positive economic environment, but we're still concerned about uncertainty in, in the broader environment, Delta variant and other things. So we'll address those as we go along. Next slide, please. So this is a picture and many of the slides are Colorado or Boulder specific. So you're not going to see a lot of national information here, but you can see, of course, what happened with the drop off and also the recovery. And the important thing to, I guess, come out of this is we're still 5 million lower in employment than we were before we went into this. And this is an interesting piece because we're hearing a lot from local, state, national, you know, employers that they can't find people. And the question here is, are people going to come back and actually take these jobs at the end of the day? Or are we have, you know, we've had substantial retirements of people 55 and above. Are they going to stay out of the labor force? In 2008, we had a huge drop off. We had a lot of people who quote retired. And then by 2010, they were coming back into the workforce. But this time, housing prices have appreciated. Stock portfolios, sans today, have dramatically appreciated. And people may in fact be able to continue to stay out of the workforce. You'll see some of that data as we go through, even as it pertains to the residents of Boulder. Next slide, please. So this is what we talked about originally in our last forecast. We used the 2020 observed employment, which you see in gray. And we did a projected on that 2020 at the end of the year, we had the data through the end of the year when we did the March forecast. And you can see what we projected for, based on having the 2020 data. Now we have observed what you see in green through 2021 revisions to the end of 2020. And of course, the data through the first part of 2021. And what we have seen at the state level and the local level is a more rapid recovery in employment. And so our forecast now has this higher red line that you see projected for the near term. And for Colorado, gets us back to the same level of employment in, in 2022, at the end of 2022. So you're, you're sort of seeing again this more rapid recovery. Lots of reasons why, as you know, extra federal stimulus, very enhanced consumer spending. But the point is, the, the more optimistic forecast is based on the fact that we've had a more optimistic recovery in terms of employment. Next slide, please. So in terms of changing fortunes, just a few short months ago, the Boulder MSA, which is all of Boulder County, for this particular data, we have to do all of Boulder County. You can see the Boulder MSA is in the top, you know, 10%, 15% of all the MSAs in the country, year over year through August 21. Three or four months ago, we were back in the middle. And six months ago, we were down sort of on the pueblo end of the scale here. So we've seen this pretty big jump in employment and it's reflected in both this slide and the next slide. A fair amount of that has to do with the reopening of the university and the return, and specifically the return of government employment. We saw a lot of government employment that was lost in the Boulder MSA and a chunk of that was related to the furloughs that were mentioned at the local level. But we also saw the loss of student employees and others when we were doing sort of the distance learning piece. So now the Boulder MSA looks quite strong. Next slide, please. So this shows you the indexed employment by MSA. So these are only parts of the state of Colorado that have MSAs. And you can see, starting in January 20, how, how we're faring or how the whole state is faring. And you can see Boulder now in the number two slot for MSAs. And you could also see, if you just look back a couple of months, it's Boulder's the black line, the Boulder MSA. You can see how dramatically that has increased as we've seen the rehiring of government employees and also, you know, a surge in other parts of the economy as well. Next slide, please. So this is the data from, it's, the data is called LAUS, L-A-U-S, and it's local area unemployment series. So this is Boulder specific, City of Boulder specific data about people who live in the City of Boulder. They don't have to work in the City of Boulder, but they live in the City of Boulder. So you can see here, for example, in the top left, if you look at the resident labor force, that the resident labor force from where it was in February of 2020 is significantly lower in July of 2021. So not just at the national level have people not come back into the workforce, but at the local level, particularly the Boulder County, sorry, Boulder City level, we see people not fully returning to the workforce. If you look in the right hand graphic and the gray bars, you can also see that our resident employment, not our employment in Boulder County or Boulder City, but the people who live in Boulder, we have fewer people working who live in Boulder than we had going into this. Consequently, bottom left, in terms of the unemployment of people residing in Boulder, we have a higher unemployment rate than we did going into this, although getting substantially better. And we have a higher unemployment rate than we had going into this, but again, getting substantially better. So this tells you about residents in terms of how their employment picture looks. Next slide, please. So this goes to the broader county. Again, unfortunately, the data at the city level is, gets dated. So we can look at the Boulder MSA, the entire county of Boulder. And this is our change in August of 2021, so very recent data. And on the left hand graphic, you have the number of jobs in thousands. And in the right hand graphic, you have the percentage change. So you can see a big driver has been growth of professional and business services, a very important sector for Boulder, accounting, marketing, R and D, some indefinitely higher wage jobs. You can see percentage wise, not the largest, but in terms of jobs coming in, the, the largest number. Also, the bounce back in leisure and hospitality, which includes restaurants, no surprise there. And, and a very, you know, positive look in terms of manufacturing and government in terms of both the job numbers, but also again, in terms of the year over year growth. Next slide, please. So one thing that's going on, and I know you follow this in, you know, Daily Camera and elsewhere, but the CU enrollment is up. It's not hugely up, but it's up and it's certainly, we think at least, a positive thing in terms of having the students here. And I always try to emphasize this twofold. Just from having the experience of being in, in the building and talking to the students and knowing what they're doing. It's not just the spend or the parents coming and visiting. It's the fact that quite a number of them actually work in Boulder and restaurants and other things to help supplement their incomes. So we have a very tight labor force. I don't need to tell folks in, in this room or on this broadcast, the fact that we have restaurants that can't open for full shifts and maybe you have experienced less than the same quality or speed of service that we've seen in the past. The return of having actual students to help supplement again that workforce, I think is long run, very positive for the Boulder City economy. Next slide, please. So we look at national personal income. And when we look at national personal income, there's just a few things to highlight here leading into my, what will be my next and last slide for my piece of the presentation. First, when you look at the national level, we see that employee compensation as of July is higher than it's ever been before. This is wages and salaries. So we've had a full recovery in terms of the wage picture, even though we haven't had the full employment recovery that I showed you earlier. When you look at the right hand in gray, dividends and interest, it's down a little bit, but not much. So that's kind of stable. When you look at proprietor income, bottom left hand red bars, you can see that we're just about back to where we were. So this is individual business owners and proprietor income. And then if you look at the bottom right, you can see the transfer payments. This was the tax rebates, all of the unemployment insurance and so on. And you can see the big searches that we've had there. But now a much calmer environment and it's going to continue to be that way and continue to trend down with the expiration of the national unemployment benefits that occurred. For half the states phased them out earlier, but the rest of the states, including Colorado, that's really occurred September going forward. Last slide, please, for me. So this just shows you Colorado personal income and you can see the trend. And other than having, you know, kind of a bleak little quarters back there in 2020, when we went through this, the first and second quarters, I'm sorry, the second and third quarters, you can see this strong bounce back based on transfers and wages and so on. And you can see our projected trend is very, very strong going forward for overall Colorado personal income, which is one of the drivers of the economic model that we use that Professor McNown's going to talk to you about going forward here, but it's one of the drivers for retail sales tax and other tax flows. So with that, I pass it to my colleague, Robert McNown.
Yeah, thanks, Rich. Yeah, we're, we're happy to present the information that we have from our modeling effort and the background that Rich has provided. And a quick transition from personal income to retail sales, which as you can imagine is the key driver for sales tax revenues for Boulder. Now, this is the picture at the national level. And although normally retail sales and national income are going to be tightly related to each other, of course, through the pandemic, there's been quite a disconnect and that has posed serious challenges for modeling and forecasting. Next slide, please. So, but let's, let's move quickly towards the state and then the local level. And so you can see that state sales tax collections, they show a strong seasonal patterns. The, the little red circle there is, is the pandemic a complete anomaly that we've had to deal with in our forecasting. But I think what might be particularly interesting are some of the figures on the right there where the performance of different MSAs over the pandemic and into the recovery are shown there. And, and you can see it's, it's really a striking difference across these different municipalities. So over 2020, Boulder suffered about a 12% decline in sales tax revenues. And we're anticipating, and of course, we have a lot of data now through 2021, a 17% increase. So there, by the end of the year, there should be a full recovery in terms of sales tax revenues. But you compare that with some of these other cities and, and you can see that the boulders now maybe kind of in the middle in terms of the impact of the pandemic. Just look at Colorado Springs, that actually experienced an increase in sales tax revenues over 20, in, in 2020. And I think we can understand that the, the impact of the closure or the movement to online remote learning at CU, as Rich referred to, is of course going to be a, a big driver of the difference between those two areas there. And now with the students back in town, we see much more optimistic projections for 2021 and you'll see further on as well. So next slide, please. And so the, the seasonality is much more striking here, just focusing on, on this, what's happening in Boulder. But you can see that there was a sharp drop off in the second quarter of 2020, where that red line dips down the lowest point that you see in the graph. And then our forecast going forward is captured by the black line. So that's our, our, you'd say our mean forecast. This is our best estimate of what we can expect over this five year period here. And you can see that, that already from the jump off point there in, in mid 2021, that we're already at a higher level of sales and use tax collections than we were prior to the pandemic. So that's, that's of course a, a great comfort and, and the projections going forward then would continue that trend with the seasonality that's, that you see there. But the other two lines, the, the top line, whatever color that might be, and the bottom red line, those, those are higher and lower bounds on the forecast that we derive from our statistical model. And so give you some picture of the uncertainty that's involved in the forecasting. I'll talk more about that too. Let's go to the next slide though, please. And here, we're looking at annual data that takes away the seasonal variation. So you can get a better idea of the overall trend. And you can see that, that first year of the recovery from 2020 to 2021, looking at the black line, is really a sharp above trend rate of growth. And also continuing into 2022, a pretty strong expectation about growth in sales and use taxes. And then kind of reverting to a more moderate trend for the remaining several years. And once again, I, I want to emphasize the, the bounds on the forecast there, sort of the, the upper and lower bounds based on all the various sources of uncertainty that you can imagine lie behind an economic forecast. And I'll, I'll point to those at the end here too. And the next slide, please. So I, I want to highlight a few particular components of sales tax revenues. I, I think this gives you a better picture of how, how these different components were impacted during the recession and also going forward, what we might expect. These are, these are some very important contributors to overall sales tax revenues. Let's talk about the obvious ones to begin with, the restaurants in the upper right corner. Let's talk about the obvious ones to begin with, the restaurants in the upper right corner. So you can see that precipitous drop in 2020. And now the recovery in 2021, but what's discouraging from my point of view is is that if you look at those bars, the height of the bars into 2022, 23, 24. It's really not until 2024 that our model says that restaurant sales and sales tax revenues are going to recover to exceed their pre pandemic levels. I I find that pretty discouraging. And I I suppose we all have our own personal stories about why that might be the case of our favorite restaurants that are here no more. And so any rate, that's so we have to be a little cautious there. The, in the lower left, the property taxes. This, this, of course, presents a more optimistic picture going forward. You can see that the property taxes move upward in a sort of a stair step fashion because it's only during the reassessment years or the years following the reassessment years that we get a prominent boost in property tax collections. And in the non reassessment years, the the forecast is fairly flat. But for example, these are very robust increases in property taxes, as you might expect from what we know about housing prices in Boulder. And for example, in 2022, that step up from 2021 represents about a 20% increase in property tax collections. Now, the the other two entries are, I think, kind of interesting and relatively newly important sources of sales tax revenues. Let's, let's take a look at the lower right first, out of state retailers. So so these would be, I'll say, first of all, retailers that have a physical presence in Boulder, such as Target or Home Depot. But they also have online sales. And because of their physical presence in Boulder, any online sales will also be taxed. And those businesses will remit that sales tax to Boulder. And and you can see that in in 2020 and 2021, huge step up in the level of online sales coming from these out of state retailers. So no surprise there. Now, the MFO on the upper left, that stands for the Marketplace Facilitator Ordinance. That's a nice catchy little phrase. And what's happened there is that in November of 2020, the city of Boulder adopted this Marketplace Facilitator Ordinance. And what this means is that on providers of of an online marketplace such as Amazon or eBay, for example. They provide a marketplace for third party merchants. And in the past, the sales of those third party merchants did not generate sales tax revenues that Boulder was able to grab hold of. Well, now, after November 2020, these, these third party merchants are are also having to pay sales taxes and they're remitted through the marketplace and the platforms from eBay or or Amazon or the others to Boulder. And so you can see this is, this is a new source of revenues for Boulder. It's really significant. It's growing. Already in 2021, this amounts to about 3% of total sales tax revenues coming into Boulder. So it's a, it's a, it's a nice boost to your budget, to your revenue, sir. And the next slide. So I'm just want to finish to point to the challenges or the uncertainties that are behind the forecast. The ones on the left are ones that the the sources of uncertainty that we can kind of measure. We have historical record on on these activities. The other ones, we just don't have much of a track record and that's, that means there's much greater uncertainty over those. And that's just something we all have to beware of, and we try to capture as best we can through those upper and lower bounds on the forecast that you saw in some of the prior slides. And then our final slide. So Rich and I would be happy to take any questions that you have. As I'll echo what Rich said before, that we really appreciate working with the staff, the way they provide us with the data and information about what's going on with tax collections and and we appreciate the work of the council in these important financial matters, too. So we'll take any questions you might have.
Well, thank you both for being here. Very, very interesting and helpful presentations, and I see Bob has a question.
Yeah, a great presentation, guys. That was super, super helpful. Question for Dr. McNown. You mentioned in one of your slides, a couple of slides back, that the restaurant recovery was going to be slower than it seems like other industries. Is that part of a national trend? And regardless of whether it's national or or local, why do you think that the restaurant recovery will take three or four years, whereas the other recovery seems to be happening as we speak?
Yeah, my answer to that is is that is because the falloff in 2020 was so dramatic. I mean, it was I'm, I've looked at too many numbers lately to give you the exact number, but I think it was, it was almost a 45 or 48% decline in sales tax revenues coming from restaurants and bars. And so the the trough was so deep that it's just going to take a while to come back from that. So 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 the answer in terms of comparing that with other trends like nationally, well, no, nationally, the recovery is going to be a little quicker. But again, not necessarily because there's a more rapid rate of increase, but just that the the depths of the restaurant recession are not as severe in other places they were in here in Boulder.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mark.
Really, just one question. Is there any way to quantify or project the potential impact of the Delta variant or is that something unknown that that we're going to have to see what happens as it happens?
Well, I'd have to admit that the impact of the Delta variant is something that's kind of beyond my modeling capabilities. Our our model really relies on historical data, and since we don't have a track record on the impact of anything such as a Delta variant. Furthermore, we don't know exactly how the Delta variant is going to continue to evolve. We don't know how people are going to respond in terms of getting vaccinated. And we have unfortunately some information about that. And furthermore, we we don't know if there could be another variant along the way that could be even more severe. So not something that we can really model statistically.
Brings down fourth quarter GDP by about a half a percent projected growth by almost every modeler that's out there, just because of restrictions at some states and so on. So we we can build that in, in the sense that it's drivers to our forecast, but you know, we don't know what Professor McNett was 100% accurate. We don't know. You know, we had that on the last slide, the next variant. You know, I was on a, I I won't digress too much here, but we had a, the university, I think, has a tremendous team that's working on this and they started off their presentation about three weeks ago saying, this is with us for a couple of years now, probably a decade. And I have to tell you, that really shook a lot of people up, including me, who are sort of listening to this. So it's something we're going to have to live with, and it may dampen economic growth for a longer period of time. I mean, that's the reality.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks, Sam, and thank you for the presentation. I realize this is too late to be asking for breakdowns of data, but I was wondering if you had done any analysis of where those income gains were. You had a slide about overall income gains. If you were to say, break it down into quartiles of, you know, highest paid workers versus lowest paid workers. Do you know just sort of offhand where most of those income gains were made?
Yes, I mean, we we do. It takes more work to to get to your specific answer. But we have a slide that got pulled out of the presentation, but in terms of employment. So there's two pieces to this question. One is the employment recovery. And for the high income industries, it's fully recovered. For the middle income industries, it's close. And for the low income industries, it's still off 7% or whatever. So we know that the workers are disproportionately unemployed. We do also, however, know that low income workers have gotten reasonably good wage gains in the last year. Another slide that's not in there, but Colorado's average wage went up 6.6% in the last year through July. So that was good news and and low income workers did definitely benefited from that because of the worker shortage. But overall, I mean, I mean, I'm saying with common knowledge, this recession has made income distribution worse in the US, not better. And and we've got a tough road to hoe going forward here with that particular piece.
So so if I could call agree, Adam, would you be able to send us a presentation with those slides in it? Like, could you send a deck to us that included all those or if they were backups? Because I think there's some folks, me included, who'd like to see, especially if you have that breakdown in the region or for the city or the Boulder MSA.
So the, we could certainly send you that slide, that the slide I think we have. I think it's Colorado. I'm not sure that it's Boulder, but I can, we can certainly get that to you.
Yeah, if you just sent us the extra information that we could pour through it and think about it. Thank you very much. Adam, anything else?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, that data is helpful because it shows us where we need to be policy wise on trying to reduce the gaps and inequality. So that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, it's been described as the K recession because of the differences between high income and low income. And without getting off on a tangent, I was so opposed to people with higher income brackets getting tax rebates because I said, this is crazy. Those are not the people who need the tax rebates right now, but getting my little bit of my bias here.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, with that, I think we'll turn it back to you, Cheryl. You're on mute. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. So we'll move on to the next section, which is the 2022 budget overview. Next slide. So Nuri gave a really great summary of the budget, so I'm going to go quickly through these next two slides. The budget is 462 million, which is a 35% increase from last year, putting investments in broad service restorations and continued community recovery efforts. Our operating budget is a 10% increase from last year, while our capital budget is 134% increase. And I will note, a big part of that increase relates to a $92 million bond issue that is slated for the utilities department, which Cara will talk about in her capital section. Next slide. So again, we focused on our budgeting for community resilience definition when we developed the budget and we looked at the classifications of essential, important, helpful and amenity. We also continued our focus on advancing racial equity. And when data was available, we always try to make data informed decisions to improve our service to the community. Next slide. And next slide. So I'll start with revenues. Our total citywide revenues is 471 million. Sales and use tax is the largest category, but you'll notice that our other category this year is very large as well. And again, that relates to the bond proceeds related to the debt issuance that we have planned this year. Next slide. So if we exclude utilities, we're down to 293 million. And our, if you look at sales tax, property tax and other taxes, they actually account for 77% of total citywide revenue. So a very much a majority of our revenue comes from our taxes that we collect. Next slide. Focusing in on the general fund, our budget is 166 million, which is a 6% increase or 9 million over our 2021 year end estimate. So I will note some of these figures compared to year end estimates rather than our adopted budget, just because we did see a much quicker recovery. So we thought that would be a better comparison. The chart also includes cost allocation, which reflects our total charges that the general fund makes to our dedicated funds for things such as internal services and and those types of items. Next slide. So looking at the history of the general fund revenue, you'll notice that our 2022 revenues are projected to be higher than our pre pandemic revenue. We, of course, fell sharply in 2020. We have recovered well in 21 and expect a continued recovery in 2022. But I will note, we've included the compound annual growth rate here. And if we look at 2019 to 2022, that actually reflects a compound annual growth rate of only 1.6%, which, as we all know, at least currently is is considerably below inflation. The latest statistic from the US Bureau of Labor Statistics in August is inflation is 5.3% August over August. Of course, our largest percentage is in the energy sector. Next slide. So here we're looking at the five major revenue categories in the general fund that account for 75, around 75% of general fund revenue. We've included the approved budget, the 2021 end of year estimate, our recommended budget, which we're presenting this evening. And then the change from our year end estimate to our recommended budget. We've also included in orange that compound annual growth rate for each of the categories. And you will see that some revenues have grown modestly over the period and some are still projected to be below our pre pandemic levels. We'll discuss retail sales tax and property tax in the next few slides. Business use and construction tax, we continue to have a baseline that we that we budget for. And we're projecting these taxes to be around 6% over our 21 year end estimates. Accommodations tax, we did consult with the convention and visitors bureau. This tax is recovering mainly a lot due to our domestic leisure travel, but it's still not projected to be above pre pandemic levels. In 2019, you'll notice it was 8.8 million and we're only budgeting 7 million in 2022. Parking revenues were significantly down in 22, I'm sorry, in 2020 and have taken a slow steady increase. And 2022 does represent recovery of those revenues, along with some of the increases for on street parking and graduated fines and neighborhood parking permit increases. And then if you look at all other revenue, that's projected to go down slightly. Some of the categories here are grants and franchise fees. Next slide. So looking at the 2022 major revenue sources of retail and property tax, some of the assumptions we used. We just talked about the forecast. We did use CU's May forecast. And we continue to use the average, the average of the medium and low forecast, which is an 8.8% over the 2021 end of year. And we believe that this is a conservative forecast, especially taking into account some of the conversation about the Delta and other variants of of the virus. So as mentioned in the August 24th meeting, as well as their presentation, increases in our online out of state sales are far outpacing the increases in sales we've seen within the city. As of July 2021, sales by out of state retailers increased 66% compared to July of 2020. If we exclude the marketplace facilitators that were discussed. If we exclude the marketplace facilitators that were discussed. The sale still grew by respectable thirty six percent. Comparing that to in city sales tax, in city is up eleven point five percent in July twenty twenty. So certainly our our online and out of state retailers have really helped us rebound from the pandemic. Moving to property tax, as we all know, twenty twenty one was a reassessment year. We did receive the preliminary assessed valuation from Boulder County. And our twenty twenty two recommended budget is approximately five point four percent increase in property tax revenue. Our residential properties increased about twelve percent. Commercial remain nearly flat while our industrial property properties declined slightly. Next slide. So moving, you've seen this slide a lot, but I think it's an important slide to show. I I do want to note that. This chart, along with our twenty twenty two budget. Assume that the point three percent community culture and safety tax has not been extended. That's the way we do any ballot issue. If voters agree to extend this tax, we will come back to council for a budget, budget adjustment in early twenty twenty two. So I just wanted to let you know that excluding that tax, you'll see that we collect forty two cents out of every dollar. Collected in retail sales tax in the city, the remainder goes to the state RTB and Boulder County. Of the forty two cents, half of this is unrestricted in general fund. While the other half is restricted in the open space, transportation and parks and rec funds. Next slide. So this slide just shows once again our sales tax for the next several years and future changes. The orange is the point three, uh, community culture and safety tax I've talked about. But I really wanted to note at the end of twenty twenty four, we have a point one five percent general fund tax that will be expiring. So certainly something we'll talk about in the future. As of for twenty twenty two, that point one five percent equates to about five point eight million in general fund revenue. So very significant to our general fund. Next slide. Here's a list of the front range cities. We have included Denver this year as well. Their twenty twenty one sales tax rates. The blue bar represents the city portion. The orange is the state, then we've got RTD in the county on this. And you'll notice the top figures represent the total sales tax, sales tax rates for these cities. Boulder is the highest of all of these cities at eight point eight five percent. Next slide. So moving on to property tax, similar slide here. As we all know, the schools collect the majority of property tax revenue. We receive fourteen cents out of every dollar. The general fund between general purposes and public safety receive eleven of that fourteen cents. And then the library, parks and rec and community housing and assistance all receive a small portion. Just a reminder, our total mills for the general, or I'm sorry, for the city is eleven point nine eight one mills. And our city charter allows us to go up to a rate of thirteen mills. Next slide. So here's the similar slide for the front range cities. Again, the city portion is in blue and you will notice here. The board that Boulder has the fourth lowest total property tax rate of the municipality shown on this chart. Next slide. So I'm going to move on to expenditures. Next slide, please. Here is a breakout again of our total budget. You'll see the operating budget this this year is about sixty five percent. While the capital budget is thirty five percent, I I will note again. That bond sale does kind of skew compared to what we normally see. We normally have about a three quarter, one quarter split between operating and capital. We then break it in both operating and capital into the general fund and then our dedicated funds. Next slide. Here is just a graph of our budgets between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty two. The gray bar represents our operating budget. The green and the yellow bars represent our capital budgets. We did break out utilities just for that bond issue. So you could compare more apples to apples. You will see that our operating budget in twenty twenty two is still lower than our pre pandemic operating budget in twenty nineteen. Next slide. This chart has a lot on it, so I I do apologize for that. It shows our recommended budget, four hundred and sixty two million dollars by department. And you'll notice here utilities has the largest percentage at thirty eight percent, followed by transportation and police. Next slide. If we exclude utilities, transportation and police are our largest portions, followed by open space and mountain parks. Next slide. Focusing again on the general fund only, the total budget of one hundred and sixty four million. This does represent a twelve point one percent increase or seventeen point seven million dollars. From total expenditures in our twenty twenty one approved budget. The majority of this increase is attributed to partial restoration of city services. And programs to pre covid pandemic levels, which we will present or Mark will present in the coming slides. It also includes the transfer out category, which reflects about twenty million of general fund transfers to support citywide services. And other funds as long as well as our capital fund. And some of the other funds that we support with general fund money is the recreation activity fund. The planning and development services fund and the affordable housing fund. Next slide. This slide displays the increases in operating budgets by departments across all of our funds. Again, later in the presentation, Mark will talk about some of these increases. But you'll notice we have the largest increases in city manager's office, library and arts and human resources. And you'll also notice that pretty much across the board, the increases are over five percent that all of the departments have received. Next slide. And I couldn't do a presentation without talking about reserves. And where we are recommending reserves to be in the twenty twenty two budget. Again, reserves are important because they do provide us options to respond when we have unexpected things occur. The Government Finance Officers Association best practice is that we need a minimum of two months operating reserves. And then you just increase from there based on the city specific risks that we have. And some of our risks are why we are recommending a a goal of twenty percent for our reserve, so above the minimum. And those are the vulnerability to extreme events and public safety concerns, so flood, fires, those types of things. Our revenue volatility, we've definitely seen in the, especially in the general fund. Sales tax revenue is about fifty percent of all revenue collected, and we've seen the volatility that the pandemic has caused. And it was nice to know we had our reserves when we needed them during that time. Also expenditure volatility volatility or opportunities. If if an opportunity comes up to purchase something, it allows us that flexibility. Other funds, I talked about the other funds that rely on the general fund for support. And then rating agency, of course, reserves is one of the many factors that rating agencies look at. When determining our bond ratings. So we do still recommend a goal of twenty percent for general fund reserves. Yet are including a reserve level of nineteen point five percent. In general fund in the budget that we are presenting this evening, we recognize there's a lot of needs. And we felt that it would be best to keep it at the nineteen point five percent level in this recovery year. So with that, I will take any questions that you might have on our revenues expenses. And again, Mark is going to go into a lot more detail about some of the increases we are recommending.
Thank you so much, Cheryl. Counsel, any questions for Cheryl up to this point?
Yeah, thanks, Cheryl. That was real helpful. Um, Cheryl, you mentioned bonding anticipated in twenty twenty two will skew things compared to prior years. How much of that bonding is for our water utilities and how much of that, if any, is. Anticipated for under ballot measures two I and two J, specifically two J on the sales tax that we would bond against, or maybe none of it is.
So none of, because we don't put that in unless it's actually approved. We would come back to council next year and increase the budget for any bond that we might want to do if it's approved by voters. So right now it's all utilities.
Great. And just a question on that. It looks like historically, or at least in recent years, our bonding for for our water utilities has been kind of in the. Twenty to thirty million dollar range here, and then we're going to jump up to about a hundred and twenty million this year. What's the explanation for that lumpiness? We just have some big projects that that kind of come up all at the same time, or what's the reason why we'd be taking down so much more debt next year than we have historically?
Okay, and I might refer this to Joe Teddy, Teddy do, oh, sorry, sorry, Joe, I really messed that one up.
We just call him Joe.
It does have to do with some pretty large dollar amount projects. And just to clarify, it's ninety two million that they're recommending we bond this year, Joe? Or it looks like Chris DuVille's on on here for to answer that.
Good evening, everyone. Chris DuVille, I'm the deputy director of operations for utilities, and I'm standing in for Joe this evening, our director. So yeah, Bob, the the quick answer to this question is this bond is anticipated to to support seven different projects. So it's about half, about forty two million dollars in the water fund. And about fifty million dollars for the wastewater fund. And yeah, we can, I can clarify if desired, some of the specific projects, but they're spread across our treatment facilities as well as our. Distribution and collection system infrastructure. But these needs are are real and our backlog is significant. So that's that that's the quick answer for this large bond.
Thanks, Chris. That was helpful. And just final question, do you, as you look out to the out years, maybe two or three years out, you anticipate that bonding for water utilities? Will revert back to a level that we maybe saw prior to twenty twenty two, maybe in the twenty to thirty million dollar range per year?
I I do believe that is our projected schedule over the next cycle of years. The exception being, and you might have seen this in your packet, in twenty twenty four, there is a fairly substantial bond anticipated for. The stormwater and flood management utility. So that is one exception.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Bob. Rachel.
Thanks, Sam. Yeah, just one quick question, Cheryl. Thank you for the presentation so far. On the reserve, we had targeted twenty percent previously. I think it was also a general fund, right? We were trying to get to twenty percent under. That was a big goal for Jane Brodigan, I think, if I'm remembering correctly. So wondering how close we got to that and how far we dipped below and how much we're adding back in this year to get to nineteen point five?
We actually did not dip below nineteen point five last year, and a lot of that, we had expected to dip below nineteen five. But what happened is our construction use and business use taxes came in a lot higher than what we had anticipated. So what, between that and the fact that we reacted so quickly when the pandemic started and and reduced and cut our budgets, budgets. We were able to actually maintain the nineteen point five percent, which I think. Is really great. So we're not really adding anything into reserves in the twenty twenty two recommended budget.
Okay, and if we wanted to get to the twenty percent, it would be like eight hundred thousand dollars added to reserves, is that right?
I'm correct, exactly.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one more. This is more in the ramble of suggestions, Cheryl. I saw that we had year on year. Increases on a department by department basis of, you know, eight, ten, twelve percent. Those are presumably against artificially depressed budgets from from last year. When you present this on second reading, if you do a presentation, it would be maybe helpful to add a two thousand and nineteen column. Because as I think you said, our annualized increase over about a three year period was only about one point six percent. So if you could, you could compare that to normalized year, that'd be real helpful.
Great suggestion. We will do that. Thanks, Bob.
All right, counsel, any other questions? I am seeing none. Back to you, Cheryl.
That was the end of my presentation. I'm turning it over to Mark Wolf to talk to you about some of the increases you'll see in this year's budget.
Counsel, bear with me while I get this going again. All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Again, I'm Mark Wolf, Senior Budget Manager. I'll be walking through some of the highlights of the recommended twenty twenty two budget, including proposed restorations of services. Enhancements and innovation and service excellence and investments in our employees. To begin, the recommended twenty two budget proposes many restorations to our most critical programs and service levels. As a part of the budget process, we asked departments to consider budget requests and enhancements based on several criteria. One explicit tool the organization utilized was the rapid racial equity assessment. Which seeks to understand the potential impact, both negative and positive. On different racial and ethnic groups across the community. Additionally, we were targeting communities or areas of the city that may have had disproportion or are still experiencing this proportionate impact due to the pandemic. And we also took the opportunity to look at services that weren't just built to where we were before, but perhaps provided an opportunity. To to make improvements into the future. The total funding in our restoration category this evening is a little over nine point four million dollars. Now I'll run through several specific highlights of our proposed service restorations. Starting with restorations in our communication and engagement, including our community connectors program. Proposals in housing and human services include reinstating the youth opportunities program and supported the youth opportunities advisory board. Also proposed is restoration of the human services fund to pre pandemic levels. To support our individuals and families through our nonprofit agencies. In library and arts, restorations include restoring cultural arts grants to pre pandemic levels and restoring services and hours across the library system. Also, the budget proposes to restore operations at Canyon Theater, the Maker Space, and supports temporary support staff to maintain hours and services throughout the system. For open space and mountain parks, proposals include restoration of course system maintenance activities. Deferred maintenance projects and continued implementation of master plan strategies. Parks and Recreation includes several restorations, including addressing deferred maintenance and cleaning of urban parks. And citywide forest forestry activities, community events and access to programming through expand. Additionally, this budget recommends funding to restore recreation programming, continuing the work to restore hours and services from covid related reductions. This amount of six, about six hundred thousand dollars represents the general fund portion to restore service. As we discussed with counsel last month. During our ARPA conversation, supplemental funding is necessary to support the Recreation Activity Fund, since it is revenue dependent. Additional ARPA dollars are a part of that conversation in twenty two. And the long term health of that fund is certainly a subject of conversation as Parks and Rec looks to refresh the master plan. In Planning and Development Services, we are looking to restore the customer service and intake team. To improve processing time and overall customer experience. And lastly, in transportation and mobility, we are seeking to restore the base hop service levels in that area. I'll now turn to our proposed service enhancements or what we're calling our recommitment to innovation and service excellence. We've covered this a bit already, but despite our challenging fiscal environment, we did make it a point. To remain committed to our values in several areas, including our commitment to. to remain committed to our values in several areas, including our commitment to serving basic human needs, addressing issues related to police reform, caring for our open spaces, parks, libraries, and recreation centers, and utilizing arts and culture to create, to cultivate creativity and create community. Our total funding in this area is a little over eight point one million dollars. Some highlights of service enhancements include the creation of an equity liaison position, and language access manager to advance our racial equity work, and additional support of our police oversight program. In Finance, proposed implementation of an underserved business program to open city procurement opportunities for underserved businesses is included in this budget. And in Fire Rescue, funding is proposed to implement the goals within the master plan of improving advanced life support. Next, we are very excited about recommended enhancements in Housing and Human Services, including a program to provide grants for permanently affordable housing unit residents that face a special assessment. Increase support of the Substance Education and Awareness Fund from two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand to support abuse prevention for youth and community members experiencing discrimination. Another proposal is in response to the substantial increase in affordable housing units across the city and the need to ensure compliance within those units. And last, implementation of our home ownership program through coordinator position. And then I'll just touch briefly here on the eviction protection and rental assistance services, or Epress, where the, we have reflected initial program costs here in this number. This is for license. There's some additional support in P and D S for license fee administrative administrative support. The total amount budgeted is larger than this eight fifty-four and change that is represented here. There's an additional three hundred and forty-three thousand to repay the general fund that is budgeted. Total expected revenue from the tax is projected around one point five million. The remaining, the balance will be used to create a fund balance for this fund. Recommendations and innovation and technology include continued support to improve our database decision-making and keeping our digital content fresh and relevant with our new website. Proposals in Parks and Rec include enhancing maintenance for the downtown and cemetery and improving competitiveness in our non-standard positions. Planning and Development Services proposes to digitize our records for public access. Police also has a request for additional executive leadership training and transportation and mobility. Proposes to increase the snow and ice program budget, although this is to reflect the historical current levels of service that we're seeing based on snow events. Our last theme is in investing in employees. The most critical aspect to our ability to provide excellent service to the community is our workforce. Our employees made significant sacrifices beginning in March twenty twenty, as we've discussed. And if you follow recent news reports, it's extremely important for employers to be competitive in this market. So our ability to maintain status as an employer choice is critical moving forward. At the height of the recent crisis, seven hundred forty-one city employees were furloughed, one hundred and forty-eight employees were laid off or ended employment. The proposed twenty twenty-two budget brings back staffing capacity throughout the organization, restoring fifty-eight point five standard positions and eighteen fixed term position extensions to provide services that were reduced in twenty or twenty-one. In addition to the retroactive payment to employees for the twenty twenty furlough days within the special adjustment to base, the twenty twenty-two budget proposes full restoration of merit increases and negotiated salary adjustments for all employees. Additional costs include a mandatory increase to par contributions. Two hundred fourteen thousand represents the employer portion of those costs, increases to medical premiums, and contributions to a reserve fund as the city moves towards a self-insured medical plan to help decrease long-term costs. Now I will hand it off over to Kara Skinner, our Assistant Director of Finance, and then we'll pause again for questions.
Thanks, Mike, and good evening, counsel. So next, we will present the six-year CIP program, and we'll begin with the definition of CIP projects. And they are major projects for the purchase, construction, or replacement of the city's physical asset. Next slide. And there are different project types. We break them down into capital maintenance and enhancement, new projects, capital planning studies, and land acquisitions. Next slide. So this is a representation of the six-year CIP. It is a six-year plan, although we are only appropriating the dollars for the first year of that plan in twenty twenty-two. But it is good to see the long-term plan with to our capital projects. The six-year CIP is six hundred and ninety-two million, four hundred and thirty-one million of which is related to our utilities. And that is demonstrated by the light blue bars in this chart. So you will see that significant amount in twenty twenty-two for utilities. And then again, in twenty twenty-four, as was mentioned earlier, by utilities. There's also the significant project in twenty twenty-three by department, the Facilities and Fleet Department, and that's the renovation of the Alpine Balsam Pavilion. Next slide. This is that same six-year plan by department, but it's excluding utilities so that you can see a little more granularity of the other departments that have regular capital improvement program and spending in most years, particularly transportation and mobility and parks and recreation and open space and mountain parks. And next slide. So this represents the six-year by project type. And what we really want to share here is that the majority of the capital improvement program is in those two categories of capital maintenance and capital enhancement. And we, that's the blue and the orange. And we think of that, or those two categories together, as the taking care of what we have. And it does represent ninety-three percent of the six-year plan. So next slide. So now we're going to move on to highlight some specific projects, and we're going to begin with utilities as they are such a significant portion of the CIP. And it is noted on this slide by the asterisks, but the first four projects are the largest projects that will be funded by that ninety-two million dollar bond. So three large water utility projects, one large wastewater utility project. And then they do also have some important stormwater and flood management projects planned for twenty twenty-two. Next slide. And before we go on to other project highlights for other departments, we did want to just speak to utility rate changes, because to support ongoing operations and the debt service for the large capital projects, utilities does have a schedule of planned smooth rate increases. And they do that to avoid one-time rate spikes in any one year. The table here shows what the planned rate changes are for the next three years in that dark green. And the first column is the twenty twenty-two rate increases, so seven percent for water, five percent for wastewater, and twelve percent for stormwater flood. The last three columns show what that translates to in terms of the impact to an average single-family monthly residential bill. And so in total, the twenty twenty-two rate increases on average would increase bills by approximately seven dollars and fifty cents. And next slide. So moving on to some other departments, we did want to again highlight for facilities in twenty twenty-two, we are funding the Alpine Balsam Flood Mitigation Project for three million dollars. And then again, just wanting to look ahead a little bit to twenty twenty-three, to that sixty million dollar project at Alpine Balsam to renovate the pavilion for the Western City Campus. Innovation and Technology has a number of projects planned for twenty twenty-two, and then again, looking ahead to twenty twenty-three. These are important dollars for enterprise-wide foundational systems. And then again, just wanted to note, we did add some dollars to the North Boulder Library Project for twenty twenty-two, one point two million dollars. And next slide. So Open Space and Mountain Parks continues to be guided by their master plan and the strategies contained in that master plan. And highlighted on this slide are four projects that are aimed toward the strategy of continued maintenance and stewardship, taking care of what we have, again, a common theme throughout the capital improvement program. And then again, two additional projects to address the strategy of investment in soil health and restoration of agricultural lands. And then last, for Transportation and Mobility, important projects in twenty twenty-two, the annual pavement management program is nearly five million dollars. Then also wanted to highlight the multimodal enhancements to Twenty-Eighth Street from Valmont to Iris. That's a nearly five million dollar project. And then in twenty twenty-two and into twenty twenty-three, the Twenty-Eighth Street and Colorado intersection, as well as the Thirty-first Street Protected Bike Lanes project. And that's the end of the CIP project or program highlights and overview. The next steps is the second reading is scheduled for October nineteenth. And then next slide is questions, but then I just wanted to share that following this question slide, we do have a suggested motion language slide for later.
Very good. Thank you so much, Kara. And I will turn now to counsel for questions. I expect to have a lot at this point. We'll start with Bob, Adam, and Aaron. Bob?
Thanks, Sam. Thanks, Kara. I have two unrelated questions. One, first one's probably for Kurt Fernhoffer. Kurt, you remember in two thousand and nineteen, the voters approved a ballot measure authorizing a middle-income down payment assistance program. And then we kind of put that in hold over the last year or so because of the pandemic. If the next council was inclined to move forward with the implementation of that program in twenty twenty-two, are there, are there sufficient funds in the budget to get that program launched? I know there was about a million dollars, maybe slightly less than that, in a dedicated housing fund that I think were going to be the first dollars used for that program. Do you think that will be sufficient? Or might you need to come back for a supplemental budget request if the next council wants to kick that program off next year?
Thank you, Bob. So I think that amount, that amount that you're thinking of is, it was about eight hundred and change. And we have used some of that for looking at increasing our current down payment assistance program, you know, that was capped at fifty. I I think for the most part, it's, I don't know the exact amount, but I think it's mostly unspent at this time. And, you know, two or three years will pass by the time we get to this again, if we get to it next year. And so we would likely need to come back to counsel with additional resources for that. But again, we'll have to sort of get into the details of what that would require.
Okay, well, that's probably a discussion for the retreat in January, but I wanted to at least ask about that. Thanks, Chris. An unrelated question, and this relates to our backbone fiber build. About two, three years ago, we we launched a fiber build, backbone fiber build. I can't remember the exact amount, but it was between twenty and thirty million dollars. I suspect we're probably more than three-quarters of the way done with that, and maybe that'll be wrapping up next year. But could someone speak to whether that's fully funded to completion?
I certainly could start, Bob, and others, please jump in. If I don't capture correctly, my understanding is that it is fully funded, the fiber phase one through completion. It's scheduled to be complete in twenty-two. The last estimate I heard was the end of Q two, though that could have been pushed back knowing how construction is these days with the service provided at some of those VHP sites that were added as a part of Phase One by the beginning of twenty twenty-three.
That's good enough. Thanks a lot, Mark. Appreciate it.
Okay, hang on one moment. And just a note here. This council has not had the pleasure of being at these hearings and chambers, but normally we have a whole room full of staff looking back at us and taking our questions are all here virtually. So we have lots of staff here to answer your questions. Next up, we have Adam, Aaron, Mark, and Mary. Adam?
Thanks, Sam. My first question is about one of Mark's slides. It's the slide that had all the departments and their percentage increases for next year's budget. Mark, do you know that slide? Do you mind pulling that up real quick? Perfect. I just noticed a few larger percentage increases that weren't covered in the presentation, including the city attorneys and city manager's office. Were those primarily just staffing? Compensation increases or what what were those?
For the city manager's office, I can let Chris Messcheck chime in, but I believe that is a result of moving the clerk's office and records into the city manager's office. But, Chris, you may have more detail.
Thanks, Noria. That's correct. The the one portion of it is the kind of restructure that happened and moving the city clerk's office from its own department back into the city manager's office, central records moving into the city manager's office as well. And also kind of housed within that also includes some additional funding for the equity liaison position that's proposed in this budget is housed in the city manager's office, as well as some of the non-personnel expenses related to that. So those are the the primary ones. Oh, the other one is the the restoration of an administrative assistant position to support the municipal building.
Gotcha. Also, a couple other line items that I saw. I don't know if Chief Harold or someone from the police department is here, but the policing line item was, you know, a lot bigger than the thirty thousand that was in the presentation. Just wondering what a lot of that is going to be put towards.
Good evening, counsel. Mayor Sarah Police Chief, I have Deputy Chief Weinheimer and our Budget Director Gina Collesy here to answer that.
Thank you, chief.
Can you please print out to where which line item that you're talking to, please?
Judy, I'm talking about the third from the bottom, police.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. Karen Weinheimer, Deputy Police Chief. And Gina can probably get more specific, but that roughly three point five million represents eight and a half positions. Two and a half of those are restorations. The other six are additional police officers. The restorations were an animal protection officer, a property evidence technician in a halftime position as part of our photo enforcement subpoena service program.
Thanks, Deputy Chief. Now I have another unrelated question to all these. Were there any city departments that are anticipating not spending their entire budget allotment this year? And I'm talking, you know, pretty substantial under spends, not a couple dollars here or there.
So I can, sorry, as my screen, my screen just fell over. I can speak to that. At this point, I wouldn't say that we know of any substantial depart, substantial amounts that departments are spending. A lot of times what happens if projects haven't been completed or a lot of their capital, we roll it over to the following year, and that's what we present to you in May. But at this, at this time, no is the is the answer to to our knowledge. We do have vacancies, though. I will, I'll caveat that with many departments with the difficulty in hiring, especially police. police have seen a lot of vacancies and unfilled positions. So there will be probably a substantial amount of savings related to that.
Thank you for that, Cheryl. And it looks like a couple of members of staff wanted to weigh in.
Thanks, Adam. This is Ally Rhodes, Director of Parks and Recreation. I was going to note that the Recreation Activity Fund will not spend to budget, but it also has not collected revenue to budget. We have been updating those projections basically every week for about a year and a half as we monitor attendance in our facilities and programs. So, so that is not a general fund account, but just wanted to, it is responsive to the question.
Thank you, Ally. And Carrie?
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing to Adam's question. About 800 and close to 850,000 dollars of that 3.5 million was replacement, fleet replacement money that we held last year. So that's back in our budget. So that, that's one substantial line item that's not personnel related.
Thanks for that, Sam. Those were my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Next, we have Aaron, Mark, Mary, Rachel and Junie. Aaron?
Thanks, everyone, for the presentation. Really appreciate all the detailed information. Question about the North Boulder Library branch decided had 1.2 million budget in 2022, which is great. Do you have a sense of when that's getting underway and like how many years of spending that's going to take to get that to completion?
Thanks for the question, Aaron. David Farnin, Library Arts Director for the City of Boulder. Aaron, that gets us on budget, right? So we have a contractor on board and an architect. They, we wanted to do, we had get a significant increase in the bidding process than what we had anticipated. So I don't know how much the long story you want, but we took a estimated bid in November and by March due mostly to the pandemic and supply chain disruption, but the cost of raw materials as well. The bids came back about 60% over what we had had the estimate done four months prior. We were, we cut $4 million out of the project and redesigned a number of things, but without actually triggering site review. We needed some money to cover that gap. And that's what that 1.2 million dollars represents. That is a hard budget. There are some redesign elements that need to go forward, but we don't anticipate a full site review being necessary because the, the building, as you remember it, will be there. It's a lot of changes in systems and siding, levels of glazing on the glass, that kind of thing. But we, we anticipate breaking ground within six months and the construction is still scheduled for 12, 12 months. So opening in 2023.
That's great. So then in other words, this, this 1.2 million is an additional appropriation to deal with the budget increases that were necessary.
That is correct. Yeah. So the 1.2 million was, I can't tell you exactly how that all spreads out. There was some of it which went into contingency for cost escalation, realizing that we have probably six months of redesign to do with the architects and the contractor, mostly redesigning systems, internal systems to the building. But everything really lighting, glazing, every, every, everything sort of changed in terms of the details of the project finish, but the 1.2 million gets us to budget. We have, we have the bid from the contractor. And so now it's simply their responsibility to put the project together such that it will meet that budget.
Okay. Well, it's a shame to hear about those huge cost increases, but I'm glad to hear we're still being able to get the project done.
I suspect other departments that have capital projects are seeing it as well. I mean, we may continue to see some, some prices have just been very volatile. Some kind of went up and we don't anticipate them going back down. I don't know if anybody from facilities is here, but we track it pretty carefully. And, you know, the primary makeup of a building, glass, steel, those prices have gone up significantly, mostly due to supply chain disruption, but but other, other costs like wood skyrocketed and then came back down. So we'll see.
Thanks for that answer, David. I got a couple more that actually follow up question to that. So based on what we were hearing from David there, to what extent have we taken that into account in the very large pavilion renovation project that's slated to start in the next couple of years?
Sorry. Hi, I'm Joanna Krian, Director of Facilities and Fleet. I was having camera issues. So listening to David's answer, all of that, you're right, is significant. And to your point, Aaron, we are absolutely paying attention to what this means for all of our buildings, certainly the pavilion. We are just beginning on the embarking on really the design component. So we're not obviously as far down the road as we are with North Boulder Library. But we are very much looking at that and how things are tracking in terms of how cost estimates are coming in and how quickly prices are going up and contractor availability and all the other aspects. So we are definitely tracking all of that right now. We don't have any big change to report on anything that we've done so far in terms of how we're projecting with the pavilion.
Okay. Thanks for that, Jenna. Be interesting to see how that works out. And last question is, in, in prior years, we had a modest business incentive fund that we could use to help encourage some of our local businesses to stay in town if they were expanding by rebating some, some certain use taxes and such. Do we have a timeline as our revenue comes back on board for revisiting that program?
Thanks for the question, Aaron. Yvette Bowden, Director of Community Vitality and Assistant City Manager. What the budget proposes is the information that we have for slowly building back our small business program as is. ARPA may, as we continue to delve in with our alliance partners, present some opportunity to do other things. We certainly want to leverage that with anything that's planned by the county and the state. And we'll look forward to working with Mark in bringing forward a proposal in that regard and possibly the first quarter, January, February. And Mark, I don't know if you have anything else to add there.
Just that we had a discussion, I think it was associated with ATB one in 2021 of restoring our, the, the one tool, our incentive program that we, we do have our Flex rebate program, given the demand and trying to retain some of our employers in town. We continue that, that restoration of a total program amount of 150,000 in the 2022 recommended budget.
And I want to just add one final thing, Aaron, that we are closely monitoring with CU, the, and with the chamber, the competitiveness of our program, and that may be something that we provide more information to council in the future.
Great. Appreciate that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Mark, Mary, Rachel and Junie. Mark?
Okay, I'll try to keep it down to a few questions. Actually, my first question is for you, Nurya. I recall a conversation in which you indicated you were going to challenge the various departments to rethink programs in light of the COVID experience to determine where we could do with less and occasionally do without. Did that process occur? And if so, what were the results of it?
I appreciate the question, Mark, and I will say that we hope that that's a constant ask of our departments as we move forward, right? As we looked and on our ask for budget recommendations from our departments, we really asked them to be thoughtful about not bringing us items that just restored to the way things used to be, but rather really taking into account what's needed and what they learned during the pandemic. And so some of the requests really talked about expanding or supporting some of the particularly like all those the online transactional services that we were able to do as a city and move forward because we couldn't have people coming into the building and whatnot. And some of the enhancements we have planned are to further bolster that. Others, we also realized how much some connectivity is needed in the city. And so as we think about restoring library services, we really thought, oh, that's a critical place that we do need to invest in because we saw just how important that would be. The city had already started before my time to think about consolidating spaces and that was already in the works. But certainly the pandemic has showed us that even more and we are, you see some of that as we think about hybrid workplace and telework environments as we move forward that we're not planning to have expensive expansive footprints as we used to have as a city. So I'll say that it is something that we took into account throughout all the budget requests that came with us by departments. And it is something that I think we'll continue to add. Is it a good efficiency to look for as we move forward? And we'll continue to incorporate that as our budget processes, in our budget process for the future.
Are any specific metrics you use to evaluate whether our program is still carrying its weight, I guess, or whether it continues to have the value it ought to have for the money?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something I'm always, and I think departments have heard it from me since I arrived a few months ago, is that I hope that we're thinking about what don't we do in the future because it is no longer certainly providing the value we expect. I'll say that as we think about that, data is truly important. And one of the things that I have learned in my short time here is that we really do need to invest in some data systems that speak to each other and that can really look at impact of our programming and not just the money that we're using to service it. So I encourage other departments, if they have specifics in their wheelhouse, but I'll say that I find that we're at the very beginning of that journey to really evaluate impact as we think about that in the future, because not all of that data was just available to us.
Okay. And then just two short questions. One of the slides indicated we're adding 58.5 FTEs and fixed term extensions representing 18 FTEs. The layoffs and furloughs were much more substantial than that, were they not during the 2020 period? I mean, are we still substantially understaffed or getting, how close are we getting back to normal?
Well, I think this is a path towards get back, getting back to normal and I'll ask finance to add to whatever I have missed out. But I'll say that, you know, in the beginning, when we started the introduction, I said, we're really trying to be cautiously optimistic. We're really thinking about what we need to do. We haven't had all the financing come in that we expected and we're still moving forward and looking at what that looks like for our future. But I do think that the staff that has been brought on, we looked, tried to be equitable across all the organizations and bringing back some of those staff that were critical. I know folks, for example, in Planning and Development Services, in Library and Parks and Rec, they were hit tremendously as those furlough decisions were made a while back. And so really thinking about how do we move that forward? I know for many of our staff, they wanted to expand and do new services as well, but we really felt that this budget needed to mostly restore and bring forward. But to your previous question, Mark, there were some things that we learned too, that we perhaps didn't have to staff in the same way. And as those, perhaps those transactions that became more digitally or more online or other methodologies for deploying services that the pandemic sort of showed us that we can move forward, those adjustments were made too. So we're not completely there yet in complete restoration. But I do think that this is a big step forward with the revenue projections that we have. And if I've said something completely wrong, finance team can correct me.
My, my last question is with respect to arts and libraries. My rough calculation is about 90% of the funds in that category went to libraries and not arts. And I'm just wondering how we came to that, that proportion. And I say that without any offense to library advocates. We all love our libraries, but I'm, but I want to at least ask the question, how we got to a 90, 10 allocation?
I'll, I'll start and maybe ask David and Mark to weigh in as well. I, I know, and, and I believe this community, myself included, is a big proponent of the arts. As we looked for how that moved forward, and there certainly is some money in this budget for the arts. I'll also say that we're figuring out how to supplement some of those monies with ARPA dollars as well as we move forward. But I'll let David and Mark weigh in on the ask that came forward and what our plan is for the arts in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I think the easiest answer, Mark, is in response to the cuts, right? So arts, if you remember in the cuts, council elected to keep some of the funding for the grants program. And then what you see in this budget is a full restoration of the grants program. We still have a few shortcomings in the arts budget, but I would say we're probably 95 to 98% to full restoration. The library budget cuts were more significant. So I think, I think we're right back at around 70 to 75% of the levels with libraries. So there was a larger gap to fill. And I think that's what you were referencing. And, and to Nurya's point, we have shifted a number of requests to the Rescue Act and we're hoping to see some funding for some significant art increases in their budget through that fund. And I think they meet the requirements that are outlined in the federal program.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank all of staff for a really excellent presentation. It's terrific work. I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mary, Rachel and Junie. Mary?
Thank you. And yeah, I want to extend that gratitude that Mark just extended as well to everyone who worked on the budget. I know it's a lot of work. So my first question is just sort of a follow up on the 1.2 million dollars for in the CIP for the library. And I'm just, I'm recalling, I seem to recall that when we were putting the previous CCS tax renewal on the ballot, it was reduced by about that much for the library, the North Boulder Library. Am I recalling that correctly? And if so, is this 1.2 million dollars part of that?
Mary, you are so funny. Yeah. So when we came, when we came for CCS, we had, we had made a $6 million request. Council asked if we could reduce that to five and we did. Yeah, but I don't think that's it. We, we tried to scale the project to the budget that we had and really the, this 1.2 million dollars. You know, maybe our modeling was better in 2016 or 20, whenever we were coming forward with that than what we have today. But the 1.2 that you see in the budget today is really to account for the cost increases of primarily raw materials. You know, steel and glass were, the prices went up at absurd levels.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate that. I just, the, the number was just too close to my recollection that I just couldn't help but ask. And then my next question has to do with Planning and Development Services. The restoration of those services. I recall at the beginning of 2020, I believe it was, when the whole department was getting sort of revamped, new systems were getting put into place and and we staff shared with council, and I think at that point in time, it was Adam and myself met with, with staff and they were saying that it was going to be pretty difficult for about that year, 2020, which we had no idea how much more difficult it was going to be. But this restoration, does that account for all of the changes that were being planned? And are those changes completed? And is the restoration kind of back and renewed kind of to the point that, that, or the question that Mark was asking about, did things come back better? And are we doing things differently? So, yeah, where are we at with that particular project? And does this restoration reflect that?
Well, Mary, thank you so much for the question. That really in some ways predates my arrival. And, and certainly we, D and D S went through the same experience that every other organization in the world did. And we had the virtualized services, many of which were conducted on paper. So we had to figure out how to do, do that business that had been done for years and years virtually, which the staff did. The answer to your question is that this largely restores the services that we anticipated at the time. However, many of those services have been changed as a result of virtualization during the pandemic. For example, all of our meetings are still conducted virtually and will continue to be conducted virtually. So the staff has ended up those meetings, do a completely different thing now. In addition, all of our submittals have gone completely to an online process. We no longer take paper submittals. The only time construction drawings go to paper is when they're on the hood of a truck and a project is under construction. So those things have changed and they are different than what we anticipated before the pandemic. What we have done is we've adjusted our services and we have made significant headway to implementing many of those recommended process improvements. During the course of 2020, we did, in fact, put together the process improvements that were recommended. And we are bringing And we are bringing forward no new process improvements during the course of this year, and instead we are implementing those which have been designed. We hope to be staffed on the basis of our request by March of next year, fully staffed and onboarded with all of those new team members. And we will evaluate at that time how our performance metrics have uh have improved. So that's our time to readjust. The last thing that I'll say, that our requests do not completely cover the total number of lost staff. We lost more staff than we have requested. However, we've requested what our fund can pay for and what we believe that the general fund can fairly pay for. So if uh our number of submittals increase over the course of twenty twenty two, we may look to add the appropriate number of staff in correspondence to uh the degree to which our fund uh sees more more funds coming in as a result of submittals. So we'll track it closely over the course of the next year. And if we get more submittals that pay for staff, we'll request it. And uh with that said, if there's anything else specific um that you'd like to know, I also have our budget analyst Ken Baird here with us who can delve into more detail.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jacob. Um and then um my final question has to do with the equity liaison, um kind of touching on um on um Adam's earlier question. And um as I I recall at one point, and I and I can't say specifically when, but I was under the impression that um staffing was going to be more than one additional person. And so so is this a reduction in what had been previously shared? Um and will this be adequate enough to move the racial equity plan forward? And if not, what does staff anticipate being um the plan moving forward?
I can take that one.
Great, great, Amy. And then I'll and then I can add any any context if you'd like.
Okay, sure. Thank you so much for that question, Mary. So I'm Amy Kane, and my pronouns are she/her, and I'm the Equity Manager for the city. Um this budget, as you mentioned, does add an FTE to directly support operationalizing the racial equity plan. Um there's also a position um in innovation and technology uh which is intended to support the racial equity efforts, specifically as we've discussed, um so much of what we need done initially is really setting up our systems to be able to disaggregate data based on race and ethnicity. Um and so that we can use the racial equity instruments and help departments and staff um do the analysis that they really need to be doing um to really inform policy discussions. I also wanted to bring up that as we outlined in the racial equity plan, part of our city model is to have equity ambassadors embedded into each department to help amplify the work. Um and also to ensure that all of the work doesn't fall into one specific o- office that has the sole responsibility of leading the organization um to more equitable outcomes. Um one of our more progressive departments, um I was in conversation with them this week, and they're looking to restructure one of its existing positions to support the racial equity work, not only for their department, but also the organization. And so that's some of the change that I'm really hoping that we'll be working towards in other departments. Um so I think we had hoped um that we would be able to add more to this office as we were initially kind of forming this work, but we're really waiting to see how we can stabilize the resources after COVID. And then we'll continue to look for what might be missing and and hopefully scale up. So it's similar to how Jacob was just referring, ensuring that as we move the work forward and it increases, we we will likely be coming back for additional staffing resources.
Great. Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mary. Uh we've got Rachel and Junie, and then I will go. Rachel?
Um well, since Amy's still right there, I just wanted to make sure I understood how the equity liaison will work like in relation to you, the Equity Program Manager.
Yeah.
Was explained. I'm sorry I missed it, but I'm curious.
No, I didn't explain that. So that's like a number two. That's really having somebody else who can help support the work and operationalize a lot and lead a lot of the projects that are outlined in the racial equity plan and act as a strategic partner with me in supporting the work across the organization and building out more capacity for staff in other departments.
Awesome. I'm I'm sure that will be very welcome for you. And you might be the right person for my next question or one of my questions. Do you um oversee or have involvement with the uh community connectors?
I work with staff who lead that program, that that program specifically is out of communication and engagement. Um Ryan Hanchin, who I don't, well, he's on here. Um I think he's actually running the call uh is one of, there you are. Ryan's actually one of the leaders who works directly with those individuals.
All right, I'll over to Ryan then. Thanks, Amy. Um so my question, Ryan. Adam and I, when we were at the National Night Out, um we're approached by some community connectors who wanted to make sure that we had adequate funding in this year's budget to make sure that their work continues and expands. So I just want to make sure that that the community connectors feel like we have adequately funded because I don't know what that would look like.
Thank you for for the question. Uh Brian Hinchin, Engagement Specialist in our Communication and Engagement Department. Um there are a a number of reconnecter programs that are moving forward into twenty twenty two that we're really excited about. Um we're seeing emergency response connectors uh that need to continue uh and transitioning to neighborhood response connectors and supported by my great colleague Brenda Rittenour and Neighborhood Services. And that is fully funded and an ongoing program. And and then their important work within a number of different master plans uh will continue into twenty twenty two as well. Uh and you know, it is is it something that we're also seeking some external funding uh to expand more innovative programming. Um but it is something that we're, you know, do have funding that's committed for twenty twenty two uh and looking at ways to expand that great work.
Okay, because it is so helpful to get that feedback. So we have we have funded it adequately from staff and connectors perspective, I think is what I'm hearing.
For for the immediate immediate future, yes. And I think we're excited to to keep growing and meeting the needs of underrepresented community members throughout our community.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Um see, Mark asked my library and arts question. Um and so my last question, you know, we recently did an adjustment to base that um was for, I think, policing and parks and rec and uh maybe utilities around um responding to encampments and homelessness issues. So we're just trying to understand um when we heard that there are six additional police officers, is that the same six or was that already captured the the six that we were hiring there? Um and and parks and rec money is is what we're seeing with those requests, all new money? Because it was captured in the previous adjustment to base?
Or is that? That's correct. Rachel, uh those six are are the same. We're also carrying forward the eighteen month pilots that were part of that discussion. That's about three point four million in total for for twenty twenty two. And obviously, a conversation with council about whether some of those pilots will continue. The staffing is a permanent adjustment and is built in uh to the police base. And I see Carrie if I've mischaracterized that.
Just so I'm understanding, I think what I heard you say is the six that we added in a couple of months ago are the same six new hires that we're hearing today. And Carrie's nodding yes. Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, super. Thank you, Rachel. Uh Junie, and then I'll go. Junie?
Thank you. I do I have one question about the budget line items similar to the question that um council member Swetlik brought forward. I saw on the line item, can you bring that up for city council? Please?
I think that was slide forty one, if I recall.
Yeah. I looked at the memo that was provided, the report that was provided, and I thought I saw a different amount for city council. And I see that there is an increase of twelve percent. So I wanted to hear more about this particular funding.
Oh, um Chris, if you wouldn't mind um responding, I do think some of this uh funding is for council uh conferences and things of that sort, but I will defer to Chris uh to give more explanation.
Sure. Thanks, Cheryl. And yeah, the the city council budget uh includes a couple of things. The the biggest increase is related to council member travel um for conferences and events. Um that budget was cut during COVID, and so the twenty twenty two budget proposes to restore that to its uh previous funding. Uh and then uh the the other item that's in there is related to during election years, uh there's there's funding to help support elections. And so we fluctuate that funding depending on uh um whether it's a local election or a uh kind of an even or odd year election. So I know that's another piece that's there. And then just looking at my notes to make sure there isn't any other uh piece that I am missing. I think that might be it.
Yeah, I I wanted to follow up with you on that. You mentioned some of the funding is for conference travels. Do you know how much of that funding is for conference is assigned to council members?
Um what the yeah, what the budget is for council members is there's kind of two portions of it. Each council member is allocated fifteen hundred dollars for conferences and events. And then shared across all nine council members is a pool of twenty thousand dollars. Uh and so collectively, it's it's that pool of money that is used for council members to attend the community events that might have registration fees uh or to uh attend continuing education or uh educational conferences like National League of Cities, that sort of thing.
Yeah, no, thank you for that because I think yeah, that's the sense that I get that the twenty thousand dollars is set aside for National League of Cities type conferences or the National League of Cities itself. And then the fifteen hundred dollars is for other type of conferences.
Yeah, it's you can use both of those kind of buckets for uh for events or conferences. So the the shared pool across all council members uh is uh can be used for the for conferences or for, you know, local events, that sort of thing.
Okay, so basically, it's not essentially fifteen hundred dollars per council member. It's fifteen hundred dollars plus twenty thousand dollars that is divided among the nine council members.
Correct. You got it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's all my questions actually for today.
Great. Thank you, Junie. Um so my questions, I want to start with if we could put the slides back up and go to slide sixty two. That's the capital improvement program. And this is the one question I have about the um budget, which is outside of the ARPA funding. So on this slide, we see uh under the wastewater utility, forty four and a half million dollars for sewer improvements. So I guess um my question would be, what are those sewer improvements?
I I can take that if desired. Uh Krista Ville again, Deputy Director of Operations for Utilities. So Sam, that's a very generic title. So your question is is well grounded. This is our main sewer interceptor project. So this is the main sewer that leads uh basically from from all of town except the gun barrel area. And so this is a project to uh reroute and fortify that that sewer. So that's what this one is.
Got it. And and that was the interceptor that was threatened and damaged during the twenty thirteen flood. Is that correct?
Correct.
Got it. And as part of the response that we had to that twenty thirteen flood, another big project under wastewater was relining of the um sewer pipes all the way to homes. And so I know that we started in South Boulder and we we made a big increase in the budget for lining those pipes. I- is that going on? And what's the annual allocation for that sewer lining project?
Yeah, I'll give a quick brief answer. The effort does continue. Um I can't uh in the moment rec- recite the the annual spend on that, Sam, but it is continuing on a on an aggressive annual program.
Okay, yeah, my recollection and the only reason I ask is because we in our discussion about CU South, it came up many times that there were other sources of damage. And I believe we were from over a hundred year replacement schedule to about a forty year replacement schedule to address all of those pipes. So I was just curious if this was related. Sounds like this is not related to that. This is the interceptor. So thanks. That answers my question. Um the next questions I've got are going to shift to the ARPA funding that we've got. I think, Nuriya, you mentioned, or maybe it was Cheryl at the beginning, that there's about sixteen million, give or take, unallocated of the roughly twenty million dollar um allocation that the city's got. The county's got an allocation of about sixty million. And there have been conversations that have started at the county level. Surveys are being put out to to see what the community needs are around that. And then, of course, there's some state funding, which has come in into billions and the the kind of narrowing the focus in a little bit at the state level. There are two task forces that have been seated at the state level um recently. One is a housing task force and one is a mental health task force. And each one of those task forces has been given a nominal budget of around five hundred million dollars. And so those task forces have each had their first meeting. The counties had its first meeting. And then last week, there was a a kickoff that um the governor's office created inviting mayors in Boulder as well as county commissioners for a conversation about how to link all of these together. And so I just wanted to flag that for everyone, particularly staff that these things are going on. And we may well know that they're going on. But I think it's important that we have representation, um at least paying attention to what's going on in those task forces and at the county level. Because the housing and the mental health task forces are right in line with two of our biggest problems that we have to deal with. And so one of my questions to staff is, has there been participation in that already? Or what's the plan in linking our city budget planning around housing and mental health response to what the county and the state are doing?
So I'll throw this question to Mark and anyone else on the the ARPA team who wants to answer. But I'll say uh to start with, that we have been in those conversations, particularly at the county and our regional level. Um I I know that we are paying attention to what's happening at the state and will continue to do so and uh will continue to have those conversations because I think you're right, uh Sam, that leveraging what's happening all around us is going to be really important. I'll also say that even leveraging future dollars uh as we're paying attention to the transportation bill and how that may impact us as well. But I know that uh Mark in particular has been involved in some of those county and other cities in our vicinity and our region conversations. So Mark don't know if you want to add more um to that right now.
Sure, thanks, Nuriya. Just to piggyback on that, we we are following the county process closely. Um we we have amplified their work in continuing to gain uh community input. We do expect some of the areas in common with with those transformative initiatives that we discussed with council to be in alignment. And as you're mentioning, Sam, we certainly can't approach mental services and housing alone. Um very excited to hear about uh the governor's office convening uh how to link all those together. Uh we are interested in that discussion. We'll make sure we get connected to these state level uh conversations. We we think it'll be uh really important in these areas to make sure that we can leverage our dollars to to make it go as far. Sixteen million sounds like a lot, but when we're tackling these challenges, it will only go so far.
Absolutely. And Kurt, I see that you're up.
Uh thanks, Sam, and thanks for highlighting that uh for our community. Um in in fact, today, um Chief Harold and I set up a meeting with the uh with the mental health task force um that we're going to be meeting with. I think it's next week. Um the sort of the chair of that of that committee. So um we um we are trying to stay connected to that, particularly in an area like mental health where we don't have um those aren't areas that we've we fund directly as much and have as much influence on. So we want to be um connected in that way as well.
Super. I will say that both the governor and the Senate um but uh majority leader have uh mentioned that we need to connect into those task forces. So I wanted to bring it forward. I also want to highlight that, you know, the way the city worked with the shelter, Boulder Shelter for the homeless eh back when that was being constructed, I believe, is that we put in a big chunk of the capital that went into building that facility. And since that time, we've only put nominal amounts into operations because um the facilities are one time expense, which we approached as capital, but operations, obviously, for um homeless services aren't first and foremost in our wheelhouse. That's more county kind of money. So the county has um over the years, put in a big chunk of the um homeless shelters operating budget and And we put in a little chunk, but we were big on the upfront piece of that. And I just wanted to put out a concept for mental health, maybe outpatient treatment for people with substance abuse problems. Is there a way that we can use this ARPA funding and link up to the county and the state level to do something, um, which is capital one-time expenditure, which creates a facility, which maybe is funded more by the county, but we put in more money into one-time funding, whether it's from our bucket of one-time or however we could arrange that. But it seems like to me, one of the biggest gaps we have in, uh, services for the unsheltered and in mental health support is around substance abuse treatment and what the options are here. So it seems like an opportune moment to have that conversation to me. I don't know that we need it in the budget or not, but I didn't want to let this conversation pass without at least highlighting that. Because from my perspective, the mental health substance abuse is a big gap. And if we could do anything, um, that would help kick off better support, maybe, and leverage that operational funding that we can get elsewhere, I wanted to bring that up. So, um, there's that. And then the only other piece that I wanted to bring up here, which is kind of one-time responses, if we could bring the slides up and go to slide 48. That just shows, among other things, that we are, um, fully bringing back our hop service. And so what I think, um, this brings up for me is RTD has been enormously negatively impacted by COVID, obviously, and there have been massive service reductions, including essentially shutting down our, um, mobility hub at 30th and Pearl. And so I don't know if staff's been thinking about this, but one of the things that I recall is we put out the hop. And because there was no good circulator in Boulder, the city took responsibility, stepped up, bought the buses, created the routes, hired the drivers and built the hop. And as we went to extend my kind of circulator service to the skip and the jump and so on, RTD stepped in, took those, made those part of their routes. And now those are part of their service cuts. And so we have historically been trying to buy up extra service so that we have lower headways and so on and so forth. And so with the RTD cuts and with the, the poor service restoration that we've seen so far, I just wanted to float the idea, is there one-time uses of our funding in transportation to take ownership of another circulator or two? And I don't know that this is a well-formed question or not, but it seems like, again, there's this one-time funding, which is out there. We have some, the county has some, and maybe not so much about the state. But, um, many counties are starting to have conversations about what can they do to supplement RTD because RTD's restoration may not be fast enough. And so as I look at the, um, restoration of hop service, um, and electrification, I just wanted to ask, has there been any conversation within transportation about how we're going to respond to the challenges that we're facing, um, in our community? Because RTD is so badly hampered.
Thank you for that question. I'm Erica Van der Brand, the Director of Transportation Mobility. And absolutely, um, we, we recognize that RTD is in a difficult position. And, um, we're trying to pursue a number of different strategies. So first, we have been working with RTD and really trying to make a good business case for why, um, the service should be restored. I think you've indicated, you know, sort of how that's going. We've also been working with the county and, um, with, and with CDOT to try and explore other avenues to, um, compel, you know, additional funding to restore service. Um, and so that, you know, things start to come back in our community. What we've also been doing is that, um, our transit study that we used for the transportation master plan, it, it kind of anticipated, you know, how we might, you know, go forward and so forth. So we're trying to look at ways to be able to fund that. But I think most importantly, as we go and we're starting to update our transportation master plan, we're looking at alternatives because if RTD is not going to be that, um, provider for us, our community needs transit to be successful, not only for, um, you know, our, our local community needs, but also to get all the workers in from elsewhere in the region. And so, um, we're really exploring all different avenues right now. There are a lot of unknowns, um, in terms of funding for transit service or funds that would be available for us to use for transit service, both the recently passed, um, state transportation package. And there are still things, you know, being under discussion at the federal level. So we're in this, um, in-between place where it's not over till it's over, but we're on top of it.
Okay, well, very good. I just wanted to flag that it seems like that should be an element of a conversation with the county as well. Because the county recognizes the bind that we're in and the bind RTD is in. And so even if it were only one or two circulators and we were able to put one-time funding towards buying the buses, I know that hiring operators is very difficult, but it, it seems like also a hurdle is always getting the, um, the buses to be able to run. So I think that's the end of my questions. Thank you all. I want to compliment staff again for such a great presentation. The budget is a huge lift and I wish we were in the same room together so I could see all of your smiling faces. With that, I think if there's no more questions, we'll go to the public hearing. And then after the public hearing, we'll bring it back to council. So council, last chance for questions. Okay, seeing none, let me pull up the public hearing. Speaker list, we have four people signed up for the public hearing tonight. So they will each get three minutes. And our first three are Riley Mandcuso, Lynn Segal, and Jan Burton. And with that, Riley, you are up and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Riley.
One second, I'm having some technical difficulties. I'm going to try and return, really turn to the meeting.
Okay, it looks like Riley stepped out. Brian, if we have Lynn Segal in the meeting, can we go to Lynn and then we'll come back to Riley when he's back in?
Lynn, you'll be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, um, I'd be able, like to be able to increase your sales tax revenue by decreasing, uh, the mill levy and my property tax. I just bought it today. Last year, incidentally, I got $2,800 back uh, on the last two-year assessment process, uh, it, it, without a lawyer, anything. Um, I went through the whole process, you know, protests, BOE and BAA. But, um, with higher and higher property taxes, it might look good, but you become house-heavy and cash-poor. Um, and I really want to be able to spend, but I'm not going to do that. I'm saving everything for my kids for climate change. And then we have climate change dealt, dealt with with CU South. That's not a climate change solution. That's a climate change disaster. Uh, and, you know, you can be efficient at one end and you can be very efficient and cancel all of your objectives by, by doing things like CU South, like doing things like Google and GTIS, which is a multinational that bought, um, southern land and the rev. And then that was in February. And then just last week, they turned around and sold 125,000 square feet to Google. And then I was just going to look at Google around the corner at 33rd and Walnut. There, there, it was all empty. There was no Google signs. I just wanted to see where Google was. I was talking to a planning board member on the phone in the parking lot and this security guy came up and told me it's private property. They've got restrooms and they've got construction workers there. And they're doing something called hoteling now, which is all this growth happens. And then if you, you know, even though nobody's working at the offices anymore, you can rent out the space individually like Airbnb, except in your office building. And as regulations change for the virus, you can maximize your benefit of the space. And you have a huge building boom, presuming that the, the virus is going to be over, which is kind of a big bet. But meantime, they're taking this time to build as fast as they can. And booms and busts are not good, you know, we know this, we live in the West. Um, this is not good for the economy, big jumps up and down. So I recommend you decrease the mill levy and let people like me be able to spend some money in the, in this, um, in this Boulder environment. So, let's see, what else did I have on here? Oh, the storm water is a big concern, um, the water rates. Uh, I, I can't afford these. And then with CU South, no way. The, the interceptor is a problem. It needs a long-term solution and it's going to be a lot more than 44 million.
Thank you, Lynn. Your time is up. Appreciate your comments. And with that, we will go back and try and bring Riley Mandcuso in.
Greetings, council. Today, I would like to talk to you about a subject you might not be surprised about, the ridiculous amount you're proposing to spend on police. When I was 22 years old, I was fortunate to hear Angela Davis speak in person. And it was one of the most impactful experiences in my life. It was a moment when one person's voice and arguments were so compelling that they opened my mind to something I hadn't considered before. And from that day forth, I was an abolitionist. Um, that was in 2017, just before I moved to Boulder. And so today, I would like to read you some of Davis's words from a Medium piece that she published late last year. "Abolition of slavery, the death penalty, prisons, police, has always been a controversial political demand, not least because it calls attention to the fact that simply reforming specific institutions without changing their foundational elements may reproduce and perhaps even exacerbate the problems reform seeks to solve. Abolitionist approaches ask us to enlarge our field of vision so that rather than focusing myopically on the problematic institution and asking what needs to be changed about that institution, we raise radical questions about the organization of the larger society." To me, it seems like you are all doing this myopic focus. You are trying to solve prob, some problems that don't exist. You're ignoring problems like wage theft that are not treated as crime the way that low-level misdemeanors and, uh, such committed by poor people are. And you're just refusing to consider the possibility that maybe it's worth thinking about, how could we create, what would it take to create a society where there was no need for police? What would it take to create a society like that of almost every other so-called developed nation? Where the, the vast majority, none of them have the rate of incarceration as the US. None of them have the rate of policing and all of them have lower crime rates and much lower shooting rates. Um, and I just like, I don't, I don't know, like, you know, I think that you've all closed your hearts and minds to even the possibility. And most of you are older than my parents and maybe you're just that set in your ways. But I really urge you to think about whether you have closed your minds off unfairly to the voices of the long tradition of black women abolitionists like Angela Davis and the other people who are part of the abolitionist movement, which does date back to slavery and is a continuous effort to destroy oppression. Defund the police.
Thank you, Riley. Next, we have Jan Burton and Andrew McKenna. Jan, you're up and you have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the economic forecast and for your commitment to the budget. As my mother told me when I ran for council in 2015, this is the most important part of your job as a council member. I'm sorry, there are only four residents comment, coming, commenting tonight, but I hope there are many more interested in following it. As a resident, I would like to give my wholehearted support for our new city manager, Nuria Rivera Vandermeide, who has the experience and the values to lead the city. However, she may not have had, haven't been here long enough to put her stamp on this budget. And I'm concerned it may be driven by staff. This is a big budget. The budget shows a 32% increase from 2020, actuals, a normalized expenditure versus 2021. Adding 59 FTE and 18 current fixed term positions may be impossible due to staffing availability. Please consider that in your considerations. Tonight, I am commit, commenting as a resident who uses open space, parks and rec, the Boulder Airport roads and bike paths, and our libraries and arts. I'd like to mention the arts. Thank you for restoring 157K to the cultural grants. However, the arts funding shows only 8% growth from 2020 actuals versus a 11% growth in your overall operating budget. Arts and libraries provide the largest and most important social infrastructure in the city and the greatest support for diversity, equity, inclusion. However, the city is focused on physical infrastructure through the SIP and the Community Cultural and Safety Tax. Could you please consider over the next few weeks the impact of your decision on that tax when you develop the overall budget? I.e., more money for the arts and perhaps less in other areas like parks and rec. For example, there is nothing for public art in the CIP. And that's a pretty big gap from the cultural plan. I believe around a quarter of a million dollars. Tonight, I am not talking for pre-Boulder, but we are very willing to work with you in the next couple of weeks. One general comment, the fact that everything is budgeted by department creates inefficiency and waste. You should ask your new city manager to develop strategic plans that may implement your goals more cost-effectively, especially things like racial equity plans. In addition, your willingness to add housing will be the most effective way to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you so much for your work on our behalf.
Thank you, Jan. And our final speaker tonight is Andrew McKenna. Andrew, you have three minutes.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
Well, good evening, uh, council and staff. And, um, I will say the meeting has been educational. I don't envy your jobs and I admire your tenacity to, to serve. Uh, my name is Andrew McKenna and I, and my family live in the city of Boulder. I'm also the managing partner for Journeys Aviation, which is a business at the Boulder Airport. Journeys provides glider and powered flight training, fueling and FBO services to the aviation community at the airport. Journeys employs over 40 full-time and full and part-time employees at the Bull, from the Boulder community. To a large degree, I also represent the Boulder aviation community at large, which includes airport tenants, businesses, aircraft owners, airport users, as well as several community-based nonprofit organizations who utilize the airport, including the Experimental Aircraft Association, the Civil Air Patrol and the Antique Aircraft Association of Colorado. My understanding is that contained in the current 2021 and the 2022 city budgets are several expenditures for deferred maintenance and infrastructure improvements that the airport has, have, uh, that have been long overdue at the airport. And I am, uh, speaking to express my appreciation to the city manager Nuria Rivera Vandermeide, Director of Transportation Erica Vandenbrand, and the interim airport manager John Kinney for their efforts in addressing the many issues and difficulties that have presented themselves in the path of moving forward with long overdue improvements at the Boulder Airport. I'd like to point out that since the last master plan in 2007, virtually nothing in the master plan has been accomplished at the airport. And it's great to see some, uh, some progress in the works. Boulder Airport is a valuable community asset that deserves to be supported and improved, similar to other recreational and transportational facilities within the city of Boulder, to enable it to fulfill its potential as part of the general aviation infrastructure across the United States, a training site for future pilots, and educational resources. a training site for future pilots, an educational resource for the youth of our community and a driver for the Boulder economy, not to mention a critical resource during emergency and disaster scenarios. I invite each of you to visit the airport personally to see what a great asset the airport is, what the needs are and the impact that allocating funds finally to the much-needed improvements will have. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Boulder Airport and the airport community.
Thank you, Andrew. And if you could stay on the line, I see Bob has his hand up. Bob, is this for Andrew?
It's not for Andrew. I was going to make a motion when public hearing ends.
Okay, super. Well, with that, I'll bring the public hearing to a close, returning to council. Bob, go ahead.
I'd like to start off with a motion and see if we can get a second and then we can obviously have any discussion folks would like to have. So I'd like to move to introduce and publish by title only the following ordinances, ordinance 8505 adopting the 2022 budget, ordinance 8506 establishing the property tax mill levy for 2021 to be collected in 2022, ordinance 8507 appropriating the 2022 budget, and ordinance 8508 changing certain fees.
All right, I think Aaron got that second by a whisker, Mary. So Bob, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I think we we had a long discussion, we had questions. I just want, first of all, I want to compliment and thank staff from Nurya to every single department head to the finance folks. We're putting together a solid and well-thought-out budget. I know this is a recovery budget. I know that we had a tough go of it for a year and a half and we're now trying to recover and actually in certain areas expand. I did want to observe, you know, Jan made a comment that the budget is a 32% increase over last year. That that's kind of true. Except for a couple of things. One is last year was a deficit budget or a negative budget by necessity. And secondly, of course, we had the big, we have the big financing, the big bond issue for 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 public utilities. I think our finance staff correctly observed that if you compare our 2019 budget to our 2022 budget and ignore the downturn of the pandemic, the the annual adjusted increase is only 1.6%, which is even below the rate of inflation. So we're actually in real dollars, our budget is smaller now or will be smaller in 2022 if it's adopted than it was in 2019. So we'll we'll still be in recovery mode for another couple of years as the professors at CU observed. So I compliment the staff. Also want to compliment my colleagues on the Financial Strategy Committee, Mary and Mark and Junie, because I know that they had a hand in this and worked very closely with staff and molding this together. Quite frankly, you guys made it easy for the other six of us. So I really appreciate the effort you guys put in. I think this is a very solid budget and I fully support it.
Thank you, Bob. And Aaron, would you like to speak?
I'll say a few words. And of course, 2020 was an incredibly challenging year for our community and certainly for the city organization. We had to slash a lot of services that were dearly missed by community members. We received lots of emails and people unhappy about the loss of their favorite city services or some declines in services that they really appreciated. So it's really wonderful to see that we have the financial wherewithal to bring most of those back online and really appreciate city staff for their thoughtful approach to restoring those services. I don't have any recommended changes. I think you, along with Financial Strategies Subcommittee, have done a fantastic job in figuring out how to bring our community back from the tough times you've experienced in the last year and a half. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Aaron and Adam.
Thanks, Sam. Yeah, I would also commend staff for a great budget. And I know there's a lot of work that goes into each individual department and then coalescing it into a one big thing that we have to approve. So that's been time well spent. I did want to say, we've we've gone through this debate a little bit philosophically about when we know we can't fill positions, but we still keep those dollars allocated towards those positions. I know a few of us on council have an issue with that. The only thing I'd say is maybe we could consider in the future, if it's almost a certainty, we're not going to fill positions, that we move that money temporarily towards something else. Some problem we're trying to solve, something that will in the long term benefit from spending a little bit of money now that we have available to prevent a bigger spend in the future. Because we know that money isn't going to be spent. So I'm just going to say that much. Hopefully, we can work towards that in future budgeting processes. Because I think it is important to spend every dollar we can on known issues that will save us money in the future. And then just a couple of small anecdotes. I too find it disappointing that when we're allocating half a billion dollars and locking in what is essentially going to be our work plan for the following year, that we get such little public testimony. That's something I think we need to work on as a city in terms of outreach and educating the public on the importance of the budget and what it means for the following year, even when we have a brand-new council coming in. They're they're working on an approved budget that a previous council approved. So that's, that's a big sort of disconnect. I don't think a lot of community members understand. And I think we should do our best to work on, like I said, educating people so that they're more aware of how big a deal this is. And then finally, a small anecdote, since we had the concept review right before this. We could either fund our entire city for a year or we could buy 200 market-rate townhomes at the current price of about $1,000 per square foot. I don't know what the best choice is. Maybe as a long-term investment, the 200 townhomes is the better one than funding an entire city government for a year. But that struck me as very interesting, having those two items back to back. So that's all I had. And thanks again for everyone who put in the work.
Thank you, Adam and Rachel.
Just put on a little plug for, I I think it would be good if we put put a little bit towards getting to the 20% on reserves. You know, we we are so close. And if we don't get to 20% and budgets keep growing, it's just going to get farther out of reach. So it's only $800,000 more to get to the 20% target and we have a pretty big budget this year. So I would love to see some money go towards getting to the 20%. That's all.
All right. Well, thank you again to staff for this. And again, thank you to Financial Strategy Committee. And before I try and close out and sum up, it looks like Mark has something. So Mark, why don't we turn to you?
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't aware that there was anybody else who was concerned about the reserves as I was. So I want to second Rachel's comments on getting back to 20%. I don't know why, but I I tend to obsess over that. And I also want to second Adam's comment about trying to better educate the community as to this process and to its importance and its impact on on all of us. Look, I mean, it's the budget and it's not an exciting topic for most people, but it is probably the most consequential topic we're going to deal with this year. And it does lock in programs and policies for the next 12 months. And it would be, it would be terrific if we could find a way to draw more people into the process and and be able to educate them as to what we're doing. Thanks, Adam, for raising that. I think it was a great point.
Thank you, Mark. Oh, nearby.
I just wanted to third that I I would like to continue to see what Jane had started with the 20 by 20. Obviously, we're off by a few years here, but I I also would like to see us increase our budget to the 20%. And last, I just want to say, seeing as this is probably the last time I'll see the budget as a council member, just to thank you to staff for all the hard work, very comprehensive, very detailed, lots of great information and just appreciate all the diligence and hard, hard work that you put into this. So thank you.
Super. Okay. Thanks to everyone. I want to make a few comments. First, to the reserves, I've always been a little bit concerned about the reserve level 20%. However, given that we had reserves below 5% around the turn of the century, we went through the dot-com bus. This is a much better conversation to be having than that one, which is, can we get to our 20% and hold it? I think we should, but I think we should be careful after that. You know, it was a big move for us to to set a target of 20% for our reserves and it will pay off one day when we have a big negative event that we need to fund, like the 2013 flood. And it was good that we had reserves that were closer to 15 than to five when we had the 2013 flood. So I support getting to 20, but I would caution future councils, please don't move the goalposts again because Adam has said, you know, whether it's personnel positions that then get filled or whether it's reserves that we carry year to year to year, we need to also balance that with making sure that we are adequately funding the needs of our community at any given time. So I support getting to 20%, but I also would support not moving that any further as a bar and making sure that we're putting that money towards services that people need. Because we have cut them and our real budget is not increasing very quickly. And and this hit will definitely have slowed us down, being able to keep up with our needs. Here's the other thing that I'll say, and my questions were mostly focused here, there's a one-time opportunity in front of the next council. And it's going to last about two years, but most of that money is going to get locked in by the next year. And it may have to be spent in two, three or four years. But now's the time. And if we miss this opportunity, it's going to be gone for good. So focus on the the one-time opportunity that we have and coordinating with the county will be critical to that. And I think housing, mental health and transportation, which were all areas the county's been talking about, a tax countywide on, if we can put any of this money to work on those areas, you need ARPA money. We're not sure that we're going to get that countywide tax and we're for sure that it probably won't cover all three of those subject areas adequately. So those are my only two comments. I think the budget is really strong this year. I'm glad to see we're moving ahead with those big capital programs. The interceptor's been a concern for a long time and I'm glad to see that utilities is moving on that interceptor, because if we lost that in another flood event, it would shut our city down in a way that I don't think we quite appreciate and it would be a smelly way. So we don't want to go there. With that, Aaron, I see you've got one more comment.
Yeah, just the on the reserves, I appreciate folks highlighting the importance of that 20% target. I just would say, I I wouldn't modify the budget between first and second reading to accomplish that this year personally. I'd like to see us restore those services first and then next year would be a great year to get us up to that that target of 2020.
Thank you for that, Aaron. I see lots of thumbs up. All right, if there are no other questions, last chance, staff, council, any more feedback? If not, then I will bring this item to a close. Actually, we have to vote. I'm assuming I know how everyone's going to vote. We should probably go through it. And Alicia, is this a roll call?
No, it's the introduction. So you can do a show of hands if you like, or if you want to do a roll call, I'll be happy to do one.
We'll do a show of hands to keep it brief. Junie, do you have a comment or is that your hand? Okay, great. Does anyone object to passing the budget and all the items that were moved by Bob on first reading? All right, I see no objection. So Alicia, that passes unanimously.
All right, sir. Thank you.
And with that, we're at the end of the meeting. Any comments, general comments? I'm seeing none. With that, I will gavel the meeting closed at 9:56. Thank you all so much and see you again next week.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.